Good morning, everyone, and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Public Safety. At this time, we ask that you silence all cell phones and electronic devices to minimize disruptions throughout the hearing. If you have testimony you wish to submit for the record, you may do so via email at testimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. At any time throughout the hearing, do not approach the dais. We thank you for your kind cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good morning. I'm Councilmember Yusef Salam, Chair of the Committee on Public Safety, and I am joined today by committee members Holden, Joseph, and Marte. Today, we gather for a crucial oversight hearing on the efforts of District Attorney's Office and other providers to evaluate and remediate wrongful conviction claims. This hearing reflects this council's continued commitment to advancing justice, fairness, and accountability within our criminal justice system. Drawing from my own personal experience, I understand the widespread and lasting harm wrongful convictions can inflict on individuals and on our society at large. Wrongful convictions are systemic errors in which the unjust loss of freedom seeps into every facet of an individual's life. Wrongfully incarcerated people are often in a state of intense emotional stress, and most painfully, a sheer lack of hope. The stigmatization that comes with it can often lead to financial strain, damaged relationships, and worst of all, a negative impact on the prospects of their lives moving forward. Those that know my story know that I describe to this dreadful process as being run over by the spike wheels of justice. Each wrongfully incarcerated individual represents a profound miscarriage of injustice and inflicts irreparable harm on individuals, families, and their communities. But the prevalence of wrongful convictions, especially those that go unaddressed for years or even decades, have the potential to undermine the confidence of our justice systems and the promise of justice we are meant to value. As members of the New York City Council, it is incumbent upon us to ensure that our criminal justice institutions, the police, the district attorneys, our courts, uphold the highest standards of integrity, transparency, and diligence in conducting their work, and take seriously their responsibilities to not only prevent wrongful convictions from occurring, but also provide meaningful mechanisms to identify, evaluate, and remediate wrongful conviction claims presently by incarcerated individuals. This hearing will give us the opportunity to examine the process and systems developed by our local District Attorney's Office to evaluate claims of innocence, the accessibility of evidence post-conviction, the effectiveness of conviction integrity units, and the communication channel for sharing lessons learned to improve best practices. We will examine the challenges faced by individuals incarcerated, by incarcerated individuals, rather, and defense attorneys in accessing crucial evidence and the disparities in practice amongst, among boroughs. Our goal is not merely to identify shortcomings, but to pave the way for meaningful reforms that safeguard the rights of the accused, prevent future miscarriages of justice, and restore faith in our legal systems. We owe it to the victims of wrongful convictions, their families, and to our city to protect people from the spike wheels of justice. I urge all participants today in today's hearing to engage in constructive dialogue, to seek common ground, and to work collaboratively towards solutions that uphold the principles of justice and equality for all. Together, we can ensure that no innocent person suffers the indignity of wrongful convictions and that the pursuit of truth and justice remains the cornerstone of our society. Thank you for your participation in this crucial discussion. The committee will be hearing several pre-considered resolutions, including a resolution sponsored by Councilmember Natasha Williams in support of pending state legislation to establish standards for forensic DNA testing and to request certain DNA tests comparisons, as well as a resolution that I'm sponsoring in support of pending state legislation in relation to pursuing legal claims for unjust conviction and imprisonment. Resolutions sponsored by Councilmembers Sandy Nurse in support of pending state legislation to retroactively adjust the compensation of formerly incarcerated individuals who were unjustly convicted and requiring at least one member of the State Board of Patrol, of parole, to be a formerly incarcerated person. A resolution sponsored by Councilmember Kevin C. Riley in support of pending state legislation to mandate the timely return of fines, restitution, and reparation payments where there was an unjust conviction. Resolutions sponsored by public advocate Jomani Williams in support of pending state legislation to require mental health services for incarcerated individuals with mental health issues related to the trauma of incarceration, and to remove the lifetime ban on jury duty for convicted felons, and postpone jury service for any person currently incarcerated for a felony. And finally, proposed resolution number 191-A, sponsored by Councilmember Williams in support of pending state legislation to prohibit prosecutors from using creative expression as evidence against a criminal defendant without a clear and convincing proof that there is a literal factual nexus between the creative expression and the facts of the case. I want to pause for a moment and state that we've been joined also by our public advocate, Jomani Williams, our councilmembers, Ariola. And I want to also pause as well to allow for the public advocate to make a statement.
Thanks so much. Peace and blessings and light to everybody. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm sure it was mentioned, but I say it's never lost on me. God is great. Allah Akbar. You are presiding over a hearing on wrongful convictions. That's, I don't know what else to say, but peace to you. My name is Jomani Williams, and I'm a public advocate for the City of New York. I would like to thank Chair Salam and the members of the Committee on Public Safety for holding this important hearing. Since 1989, more than 300 people have been exonerated in our state and nation. New York ranks third in wrongful convictions. Every wrongful conviction means that a person is separated from their loved ones, loses their freedom and community connections, and is almost always traumatized. The state has the power to imprison people, and with that power comes great responsibility, and we must do everything we can to prevent and remediate wrongful convictions. Wrongful convictions harm entire communities. Incarceration tears people from their loved ones, traumatizing not only them, but their friends and families and communities who may have depended on the person emotionally and financially. When a person is released from prison or jail, or even if they were not sentenced to any period of incarceration, their criminal record follows them and affects their ability to pursue employment or education, and can affect where they can live. Wrongful convictions harm our city financially as well. For example, Louis N. Scarsella, a former NYPD detective who has been accused of framing dozens of people for murder, has cost taxpayers, at this point, $110 million in settlements. Additionally, like all aspects of the criminal legal system, black people are disproportionately more likely to be wrongfully convicted. Innocent black people spend an average of 13.8 years wrongfully imprisoned, which is 45% longer than white exonerations. There must be robust safeguards against wrongful convictions, as well as mechanisms for people who have been wrongfully convicted to challenge their convictions, even if they pleaded guilty. In fact, nearly 11% of the nation's 362 DNA-based exoneration since 1989 involved people who pleaded guilty to serious crimes and they didn't commit. There are a number of reasons why an innocent person might plead guilty, often to guarantee a lessened sentence in a system that is stacked against them, and many people who have maintained their innocence for years while incarcerated will take a guilty plea in exchange for immediate release. Those who have never experienced incarceration, especially long-term incarceration, will never be able to finally understand, will never be able to fully understand this decision. New York is one of five states without a right to counsel in post-conviction proceedings, making it especially difficult for indignant people to appeal their cases. In New York and in the United States, simply being innocent isn't enough to have convictions overturned, as the U.S. Supreme Court has established onerous rules for what kind of evidence can be considered and when. For example, in Schlopp versus Dello, the court held that a person must demonstrate, quote-unquote, "new reliable evidence" that was not presented at trial through what constitutes new evidence, though what constitutes new evidence was not clearly defined. For many wrongfully convicted people, there is no DNA evidence or new evidence at all that can exonerate them. There's also no way to quantify for how many people exonerating evidence may exist but has not been turned over to them or their lawyers. For these reasons, I call on Governor Hochul to sign the Wrongful Conviction Act into law. This legislation would provide individuals convicted of crimes with the opportunity for meaningful review to ensure redress for wrongful convictions, including in cases where the individual has pleaded guilty. Wrongfully convicted people who pleaded guilty often have no recourse for justice, and this law would create a path for them. It would also provide people seeking to challenge their convictions with a chance to review the evidence in the underlying case. We must remove barriers and restrictions that keep people with criminal convictions from being full members of society. Exoneration is not possible for many, if not most, wrongfully convicted people. Two pre-considered resolutions that I introduced that are being heard today call on the state to pass legislation that would do just that. The first resolution in support of S. 206A, A. 1432A in the state, which would end the practice of barring people with felony convictions from serving on juries in New York State. The second is in support of S. 206A and A. 1432A, with support incarcerated people reentering society for providing them with targeted mental health services to relate to the trauma of incarceration upon reentry and reintegration to society and release. Wrongful convictions are scourge on our legal system. I remind you of the words of Reverend Dr. Molofa King Jr., "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." Very often, with a heavy police presence in black and brown communities, we're often told that is because victims of perpetrators are primarily black and brown. We often leave out the fact that most of the overturned convictions and convictions that were outlawed in the first place are also predominantly black and brown, which is also evidence that the system is not working in terms of toward justice as it should be. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you as well. Now turning to testimony. Today, we will first be hearing from district attorney's offices, followed by a panel from the public defenders organizations and the Innocence Project. After those panels conclude, we will begin testimony from the public. I will now introduce our first panel of witnesses and swear their in with us. Today, we have invited guests Charles Linehan, the Kings County District Attorney, Bryce Bingett, from the Queens County District Attorney, Risa Gerson, from the Bronx County District Attorney, Terry Rosenblatt, from Manhattan District Attorneys, Bridget Brennan, Special Narcotics Prosecutor for New York City. So if you can... Good morning. If you can all please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and respond honestly to councilmembers' questions? Noting for the record that all witnesses answered affirmatively, you may begin your testimony. Yes?
Thank you, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. It is indeed an honor to be here, and it is very uplifting to see Councilmembers Salam, who is the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, embracing his future after having been wrongfully incarcerated. I think it provides us all with inspiration and guidance as to what we should all be working towards. So thank you very much. And my greetings also to the public advocate and the councilmembers who have joined us. I'm the City's Special Narcotics Prosecutor, and as you know, our office is unique with citywide, five-borough jurisdiction, but focused exclusively on narcotics crimes and related crimes. As a result, the scope of our post-conviction claims is more limited than in the district attorney's offices, and I'll explain why that is. Our office was established five decades ago, and that was when heroin was ravaging the city and the state. In 1971, the state legislature created the office for the City of New York, granting it authority to prosecute felony narcotics crimes involving lethal drugs like heroin, cocaine, addictive pills, and fentanyl, along with related offenses. That is because the city was recognized as a state and national hub for narcotics trafficking, and unfortunately, it continues to play this role to this day. Tomorrow, my office will recognize the 50th anniversary of the establishment of the office and its important work. Hundreds of former prosecutors and staff who have worked in the office over the past five decades will gather to acknowledge our hard work and contributions to keeping the city safe. And preparing for that event has provided me the opportunity to reflect on how the office has evolved, and how prosecution has evolved, and how perspectives have evolved. The office evolved from investigating large-scale heroin and crack organizations in the '70s and '80s to pioneering alternative to incarceration programs in the '90s. In the 21st century, we have tackled cocaine cartel cases, the prescription pill crisis, and now are doing all we can to reduce the supply of the most lethal drug we have ever seen, fentanyl. Today, our office is recognized not only in the city and state, but nationally and For its expertise in identifying emerging trends in trafficking dangerous drugs and developing effective strategies to tackle each new challenge. But at the same time, as I say, we have evolved, and prosecutions and what prosecutors view as their responsibilities has changed as well. We are sending far fewer defendants to state prison than in decades prior. In 2023, 263 of our prosecutions resulted in the state incarceration of defendants, a decline of more than 90% from the 2,832 incarcerated in 1996, more than a generation ago at the height of the crack epidemic. And so, our office embraces our responsibility to fully ensure that our communities are safe and that our justice system is fair and equitable. And accordingly, we have established a conviction review process that assesses whether we have met our sworn obligation to uphold the law, not only the laws that penalizes illegal conduct, but also laws that protect the rights of the accused and the rights of people who have been convicted. Because of the specialized nature of our investigation, we see proportionally fewer claims of actual innocence in our conviction review practice than the district attorney's offices. Claims of false confessions, false identification, and DNA errors are infrequent because our convictions rarely rely on DNA evidence, confessions, or uncorroborated identifications. And when convictions are reversed in our cases, the reason is often related to wrongful conduct, dishonesty, or corruption by critical police, witnesses, or investigators. To be clear, police dishonesty and corruption is uncommon. However, there are instances when attorneys in my office have discovered wrongful police conduct while preparing a case for grand jury or trial. We do not have jurisdiction to prosecute those cases and refer the investigation to a DA or a federal prosecutor. For obvious reasons, those investigations are highly confidential. But we make every effort to ensure that any related ongoing case is paused and defendants are not inappropriately incarcerated or detained while charges are investigated. However, information pertinent to past prosecutions may not be available when those charges are brought. So when the wrongful conduct is confirmed, we identify all pending cases and past convictions where the identified police officer was a critical witness in a case. We dismiss all pending cases. We also identify past prosecutions where there has been a conviction as a result of a trial or guilty plea where the identified police officer was a critical witness. We notify the attorney currently representing the defendant or their last attorney of record for the defendant of our intent to dismiss. We contact the court. We have the past convictions and pending cases calendared, make an appropriate record, and dismiss. Counselors notified of the dismissal. This process has existed in some form for decades, most notably in the 1990s, when the Dirty Thirty investigation related to corruption in Manhattan's 30th precinct resulted in the dismissal of dozens of cases. Today, the process is so much more efficient and so much more far-reaching, with better and timelier access to information about false testimony, wrong conduct, and better ability to identify the names and roles of all officers involved in our investigations and arrests. In addition, as a group, the district attorney's offices collaborate much more effectively and share information about wrongful police conduct in a timely, efficient manner. For example, there was Detective Joseph Franco, who was charged in 2019 with perjury and other crimes related to his tenure as an NYPD narcotics detective. He worked in the Bronx, Brooklyn, and Manhattan. Ultimately, hundreds of cases he worked on were dismissed, including more than two dozen brought by my office. Seventeen previous felony convictions were dismissed, two pending cases, as well as misdemeanors that were pled to on felony charges. To address other issues with convictions, we have an active conviction review committee composed of experienced prosecutor and chaired by Nigel Farina, who is sitting here with me today, who also heads the office gang unit and is the Chief Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Officer. The commission is guided by the principles of fairness, justice, and equity, and its mission is to determine whether a conviction should be vacated or modified in accordance with applicable law and based on relevant verified information. The committee has two primary tasks: to conduct independent and impartial post-conviction review in consultation with impacted individuals and their counsel; to determine whether a conviction should be vacated or modified based on legal challenges, newly discovered evidence, or other circumstances which profoundly undermine confidence in the original outcome; and secondly, to promote conviction integrity and best practices in future prosecutions through analysis of sources of errors and recommend trainings or changes in procedures and practices. Conviction review consideration is available to anyone convicted of crimes prosecuted by the Office of the Special Narcotics Prosecutor, and this is true whether there was a trial or plea bargain, regardless of whether the applicant is currently in custody, represented by an attorney, or has already sought an appeal from the court. The conviction review committee does not review ongoing or pending cases prior to conviction. In addition to reviewing individual cases, the conviction review committee seeks to improve investigation and litigation practices and promote fair and just outcomes. To that end, the committee will, as appropriate, initiate systemic review of issues such as unreliable witnesses or forensic science tools and conduct root cause analysis. The committee will also recommend, when appropriate, a change in a current prosecution practice if the result will lead to a more fair and just outcome. The committee may also recommend additional training for institutional partners and collaboration with community partners. Our website has a full description of the unit, and applications for review are submitted through the website portal. If a conviction review inquiry comes via a different route, it may be directly referred to the committee, as I will describe, or it may be directed to the portal, which enables us to keep a comprehensive, excuse me, comprehensive record of applications for review and actions taken. Some requests for post-conviction relief are incorporated in other post-judgment motions, and when that occurs, the inquiry is directly referred to the conviction review committee for evaluation. Based on a review of applications, the committee may also advise the office on changes to current practice and suggest training programs, as I have described. So we are embracing this as an opportunity to make sure our convictions not only have integrity and that everyone is treated fairly and equitably, but that we are also improving so that there will be fewer wrongful convictions. And certainly, in my office, there have been fewer convictions which result in state prison sentence, which shows the trajectory of how far we have come over the many decades this office has been in existence. So I thank the committee for encouraging discussion of this. I think the legislation which has been proposed, I haven't had the opportunity to study it, but I will. There may be some matters in there that we could offer suggestions on or support for, so I look forward to that. And I thank the public advocate as well for his support in this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you as well.
Good morning, councilmembers, Chair Salam, Public Advocate Williams. There you go. Could I get some water? Good morning, councilmembers, Chair Salam, Public Advocate Williams, and thank you for the opportunity to testify on behalf of the Bronx District Attorney's Office on efforts to evaluate and remediate wrongful conviction claims. My name is Risa Gerson, and I am the Chief of the Conviction Integrity Bureau at the Bronx County District Attorney's Office. In 2016, when District Attorney Darcel Clark took office, she created the Conviction Integrity Unit, which is dedicated to improving the quality and integrity of prosecutions throughout Bronx County. Since then, the unit, which has been elevated to a bureau, has delivered on this goal through two primary functions. First, it reviews claims of actual innocence and wrongful conviction. The review is generally fact-based and extrajudicial. To ensure that we are able to review the greatest number of cases and identify wrongful convictions, we will review a case even though there are factors present that might otherwise operate as a procedural bar to relief in a court of law. For example, the fact that a defendant has pleaded guilty will not automatically disqualify a case from consideration. When appropriate, the bureau thoroughly reinvestigates a case. In select cases where there has been a comprehensive reinvestigation, the bureau will make a recommendation to the district attorney as to whether the conviction should stand. Second, the purview of the Conviction Integrity Bureau extends forward to policy and professional practices. The bureau works closely with executive staff, supervisors, and the Litigation Training Bureau to help implement and follow best practices in the current prosecution of cases and to ensure compliance with all legal and ethical obligations. The bureau chief, myself, leads trainings for new assistant district attorneys, and the entire bureau periodically presents trainings to the entire legal staff on factors that lead to wrongful convictions. One training, for example, highlights the lessons learned in a case that involved an unreliable confession from a teen-aged suspect. Hugh Burton was 16 years old when his mother was brutally murdered in her bedroom on January 3rd in 1989. A jury convicted Hugh Burton of murder based in large part on statements that he made to the police shortly after his mother was killed. At the time he made those statements, he was only 16 years old. The Conviction Integrity Bureau conducted a comprehensive review and reinvestigation of the case. In addition to scouring the transcript and case files and interviewing witnesses, we thoroughly scrutinized the quality of the evidence that was used to convict Burton. We found scientific and scholarly evidence that was not available at the time of trial. More specifically, since trial, many experts and scholars have studied the phenomenon of false confessions and have identified flawed interview techniques, as well as personal and situational risk factors, including a suspect's young age, that increase the likelihood that a confession is untrue. Based on the new expert information and based on the particular inconsistencies and causes of the death of the defendant, we will consider the possibility of a correction Based on the new expert information and based on the particular inconsistencies and contradictions in the proof that was presented at trial, the district attorney no longer had confidence that Burton's confession was reliable. For this reason, the district attorney agreed to vacate the conviction and dismiss the charges, and the case now serves as a training tool so that ADAs can identify important factors to assess the reliability of a confession. And not only does the staff of the bureau train attorneys in the office, but members of the bureau meet with representatives of other prosecuting offices along with innocence organizations and members of the defense bar to discuss ways to improve the accuracy and quality of convictions. At its creation, the Conviction Integrity Unit was originally staffed with a unit chief and two assistant district attorneys. In May of 2021, District Attorney Clark elevated the unit to a bureau. Today, the bureau consists of a chief, two assistant district attorneys, a major case assistant district attorney, and a paralegal. In September, the bureau is adding a senior investigative assistant district attorney, at which point it will be fully staffed with five assistant district attorneys and a paralegal. The Conviction Integrity Bureau reports directly to the general counsel and the deputy general counsel of the Bronx DA's office. In this regard, the bureau operates independently from the other investigation and litigation bureaus in the office. In addition, the bureau is staffed with experienced attorneys with criminal defense backgrounds, including myself. I joined the office as an assistant district attorney when the unit was in its infancy. By that point in my career, I had worked as a criminal defense lawyer for more than 25 years, including as the director of a wrongful conviction unit at the office of the appellate offender in New York City. Notably, almost all the lawyers in the bureau have come from outside the district attorney's office, outside the Bronx District Attorney's Office, which means they are able to conduct their investigations and reviews without pre-existing loyalties or bias. As previously mentioned, a primary function of the Conviction Integrity Bureau is to investigate claims of wrongful conviction. But in addition to investigating wrongful conviction claims, the bureau also reviews resentencing applications, clemency, and pardon applications to the governor, and other requests for equitable relief. Furthermore, the bureau engages in audits of cases connected to police officer misconduct. Based on our audits, the district attorney has agreed to dismiss more than 300 convictions connected to former NYPD undercover narcotics detective Joseph Franco, who was indicted for perjury in Manhattan and dismissed from the NYPD. The Conviction Integrity Bureau accepts cases for review from a wide variety of sources, including but not limited to individual defendants who claim they are innocent, innocence organizations, and the defense bar, state and federal prosecutors, and internal audits following a finding of errors or misconduct by law enforcement, the court, or counsel, the police, the courts, and the press. A request for review can be made by a person directly on the district attorney's website, which contains a hyperlink to an email box for the Conviction Integrity Bureau. Upon receiving an inquiry, the person is sent an intake questionnaire to complete and return to the bureau. After return of the questionnaire, a preliminary review is conducted to determine if opening an investigation is warranted. The questionnaire contains a warning not to proceed if the applicant is represented by counsel and a requirement that the applicant acknowledge that the Conviction Integrity Bureau is a bureau of the prosecutor's office and not attorneys representing them. If the applicant is represented by counsel, bureau staff reaches out to counsel and lets them know that any communication must be initiated by counsel. Some cases are closed immediately, such as where the applicant was convicted for a crime not in Bronx County, or where the applicant was not convicted of a crime, for example, the conviction was for a violation that has been sealed, or the applicant is not claiming actual innocence or wrongful conviction but raising another issue that is outside of our purview. If the initial review identifies concrete evidence that supports a claim of actual innocence or wrongful conviction that can be investigated and verified, then there is a review of all the documents in the district attorney's files to determine if a full-fledged reinvestigation is warranted. And if so, we interview witnesses, determine whether there is physical evidence that needs to be reexamined, and embark on a full-fledged reinvestigation. The Conviction Integrity Bureau will recommend that the district attorney agree to vacate the conviction when the evidence establishes clearly and convincingly one of the following factors: the defendant is actually innocent, there were one or more serious errors that significantly undermines our confidence in the correctness of the conviction, or the totality of the circumstances lead inexorably to the conclusion that the conviction was wrongful and the interests of justice are best served by vacating the judgment. District Attorney Clark's mission of pursuing justice with integrity meant restructuring the office to reflect a 21st century prosecution model, including the creation of the Conviction Integrity Unit and implementing measures to ensure transparency and accountability to the residents of the Bronx. As part of the office's commitment to transparency and accountability, when the Conviction Integrity Bureau receives a case for review, the bureau will notify the person or their counsel in writing and in a timely manner about the status of the case, when a decision on the case has been reached, and the action taken. Additionally, the Conviction Integrity Bureau tracks its work product internally and reports to the district attorney on the number of applications that were submitted, the number of cases which resulted in a full reinvestigation and review, and the number of cases in which the people, our office, agreed to vacate, the conviction, dismiss the charges, and either retry the case or stand by the conviction. In conclusion, I want to thank the chair and the members of the committee for calling this important hearing and interest in learning about the work of the Bronx District Attorney's Conviction Integrity Bureau. I am happy to answer any questions the committee may have to ask. Thank you.
Thank you as well.
Chair Salam, council members, Public Advocate Williams, my name is Charles Linehan, and I am the chief of the Conviction Review Unit at the Brooklyn DA's office. On behalf of District Attorney Eric Gonzalez, thank you for inviting me here this morning to discuss the problem of wrongful convictions. Almost 22 years ago, in December 2002, I was a line assistant in my second year with the Manhattan DA's office. One afternoon, I and my colleagues received an email from then-District Attorney Robert Morgenthau with a motion attached. That motion detailed the office's year-long reinvestigation of the convictions in what was then known as the Central Park Five case, and concluded by asking the court to overturn those convictions. As a New Yorker, I was very familiar with the case, of course, but as a junior assistant DA in the office at the time, I was not involved and did not know any of the assistants involved in either the original case or the reinvestigation. Nevertheless, reading the motion that afternoon, recounting the reinvestigation in minute detail, was a watershed moment in my own professional development. We all understood the political and reputational ramifications for Mr. Morgenthau in asking for those convictions to be thrown out. True to the four words of advice that he gave us on day one in the office, do the right thing, he was prepared to admit and take responsibility for a colossal mistake that happened on his watch and to take the steps necessary to make it right. For me, it was a critical lesson in what it means to be a prosecutor. 22 years later, I have the privilege of serving under another district attorney who is as principled as the boss was, maybe more so. As chief assistant under the late Ken Thompson, Eric Gonzalez was instrumental in creating the Brooklyn CRU, and since becoming district attorney, DA Gonzalez has continued to support and promote the unit, recognizing that the work CRU does is the flip side of the public safety coin. You can't protect the public if the public doesn't have faith in the system, and the public won't have faith in the system if you're not willing to admit and correct mistakes of the past and do the hard work necessary to prevent those same mistakes going forward. In the 10 years since the Brooklyn CRU was created, 37 defendants have had their convictions vacated based on the unit's and the DA's recommendation. In addition, our office has sought the dismissal of upwards of 500 cases where police officers who played a material role in the conviction were subsequently dismissed by the department for malfeasance. It's the second part of our mission that we're here to talk about today: how to prevent these injustices from happening in the first place. I firmly believe that the group of us sitting before you, by virtue of the work we do every day, running or otherwise overseeing the city's conviction review units, are best positioned to provide insight into the causes of wrongful convictions and to propose effective ways to prevent these tragedies going forward. Speaking from my own office, in addition to our ongoing work reinvestigating cases of alleged wrongful conviction and seeking vacater in cases where we agree that an innocent person was wronged, or where we believe that a defendant's trial was so fundamentally unfair that we can no longer stand by the conviction, we have also taken significant steps to prevent any repeat of these injustices. First, in 2020, in collaboration with the Innocence Project and with significant pro-bona support from Wilmer Hail, we published our 426 Years Report, which examined in detail our first 25 exonerations and provided a thorough analysis of the factors that led to each miscarriage of justice. As I'm sure my colleagues sitting here with me today will agree, generally speaking, there is a finite set of factors at the root of most wrongful convictions, some subset of which usually played a part in any specific wrongful conviction. The 426 Years Report identifies many of those factors and analyzes them in the context of actual cases. This document can be a valuable teaching tool for anyone who wishes to understand how and why these cases happen, and I have copies of the report here with me today for anyone who would like one. In addition, for every case where we recommend exoneration, we prepare an exhaustive report detailing the original investigation and prosecution, the appellate history, the CRU reinvestigation, and our analysis and conclusion. Like the 426 Years Report, our case reports are publicly available. We include a link to the public report in every press release announcing our recommendation that a conviction be vacated, and these reports can also serve as excellent teaching tools to help prevent wrongful convictions. While these case reports and the 426 Years Report can provide important insight, they are only effective when put to the use for which they were intended. We can and do distribute these reports widely, but until they are read widely by members of the police department, perhaps as part of the police academy curriculum, and by members of the defense bar, the prosecution, the bench, and the legislature, their impact will be limited. In addition, through a robust internal continuing legal education program, our office is committed to training incoming and veteran prosecutors on the causes of wrongful convictions and on the ways to prevent them. At least twice per year, we make full-house presentations to line assistants in the office in which we analyze the typical factors present in most wrongful convictions and instruct our prosecutors on best practices for preventing them in the future. Finally, tomorrow, the Brooklyn DA's office, in conjunction with our colleagues seated before you today, will host a day-long training symposium on investigating wrongful convictions. In attendance will be more than 60 law enforcement professionals with a stake in wrongful conviction work, representing most of the state and federal prosecutors' offices in the region. We hope that by coming together to share knowledge and best practices, we can continue to improve our ability to dramatically reduce the frequency of and ultimately eliminate wrongful convictions. But there is still a lot of work to be done. Once again, thank you for the invitation to testify before you today. I look forward to the discussion.
Thank you as well.
Good morning, Chair Salam, and members of the Committee on Public Safety. My name is Teri Rosenblatt. I'm the chief of the Post-Conviction Justice Unit in the New York County District Attorney's Office. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today regarding our office's efforts to remediate wrongful convictions. We thank the city council for its continued support in our efforts to deliver safety and fairness to our city. I also want to recognize the gravity of Chair Salam speaking from his position about this office's post-conviction justice work. It is not lost on me, and it is an honor to be speaking here before you. I'd also like to acknowledge in the audience today is my good friend Jabar Collins, who I first met, I think it was about 15 years ago, when he was in prison for a crime that he did not commit, and I'm proud to have him here today. In 1935, the United States Supreme Court wrote that a prosecutor is "the representative of not an ordinary party to a controversy, but of a sovereignty whose obligation is to govern impartially is as compelling as its obligation to govern it all, and whose interest, therefore, in a criminal prosecution is not that it shall win a case, but that justice shall be done. As such, he is in a peculiar and very definite sense the servant of the law, the twofold aim of which is that guilt shall not escape, nor innocents suffer." With that role of a prosecutor in mind, DA Bragg created the Post-Conviction Justice Unit, or PCJU, in January of 2022. Post-conviction justice means the commitment by a prosecutor's office to review wrongful conviction or sentencing claims independent of the traditional adversarial legal process. We began 2022 with a staff of just two attorneys and are now a team of 15, including seven lawyers, five investigative analysts, two senior investigators, and one administrator. Our unit follows a results-agnostic model that seeks neither to affirm nor vacate closed cases. Instead, we follow the facts with an open mind, no matter where they lead. In doing this work, PCJU is guided by three principles. First, independent and impartial collaborative reinvestigations. Second, centering our work on victims and on the wrongfully convicted. And third, providing support for other forms of post-conviction justice. We are independent in that the ADAs in our unit work only on post-conviction investigations. Because of cognitive bias, or otherwise known as tunnel vision, has been identified as one of the causes of wrongful convictions, the ADAs in PCJU do not participate in the traditional adversarial process of criminal litigation. To that end, we consider an investigation a success when all reasonable steps were taken, not whether a certain outcome is secured. We're collaborative because our goal is to work together with defense counsel openly and transparently. PCJU often conducts witness interviews jointly with defense counsel, engages in open-file discovery, and provides counsel with frequent updates while the investigation is ongoing. We also center our work not on prosecutors or defense lawyers or police, but instead on survivors, applicants, and exonaries. For victims, through no fault of their own, a wrongful conviction investigation can be re-traumatizing or can deprive survivors of closure. PCJU works closely with our Survivor Services Bureau to ensure that victims and survivors are engaged during our reinvestigations. Our reentry specialists also work with exonaries where appropriate to ensure that their transition back into the community is well-supported. Centering on impacted people also means that PCJU is not focused on assigning blame or fault to individual system actors when doing so interferes with truth-seeking. Wrongful convictions occur when our system failed people more than when people failed our system. Data from comparable industries like healthcare and aviation demonstrate that people are more willing to share information candidly with investigators who are not only focused on blame or fault. In non-DNA post-conviction investigations, the quality of an investigation entirely depends on the quality of interviews and the availability of information and witnesses. A just culture model enhances our ability to get reliable and complete information and resolve claims of innocence or wrongful conviction. Finally, as a third principle, PCJU embraces the notion that conviction review is not a binary endeavor. Convictions are not simply right or wrong, but instead there are multiple measures of justice that the prosecution should address after a conviction. To that end, PCJU also evaluates applications for resentencing or clemency, conducts systemic reviews of law enforcement actors, and assists the office in creating best practices for post-conviction discovery, evidence retention, and litigation. PCJU's successes in the last two years demonstrate the strength of our approach. We have successfully moved to vacate nine individual convictions, all in non-DNA cases. Finding truth and justice in those cases was not so straightforward as a laboratory result. Instead, many involve dozens of hours of witness interviews, thousands of pages of document review, and intensive internal deliberation. We have more than a dozen other similar investigations open today. In addition to this individual casework, we also engage in systemic reviews of convictions related to forensic science errors and police misconduct. Since 2022, we have vacated more than 500 cases related to police officers who themselves related to police officers who themselves committed career-ending criminal conduct. Looking ahead, PCJU looks forward to continuing its investigative work into individual cases and systemic issues and actors, as well as unjust sentences. We look forward to engaging with our partners in the innocence and advocacy community on this work and on supporting their efforts to expand the scope of wrongful convictions to all innocent individuals. Thank you again for convening this hearing, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you as well.
Good morning, Chair Salam, Councilmembers. I'm Bryce Banget, Director of the Conviction Integrity Unit at the Queens County District Attorney's Office. I'm speaking to you today on behalf of Queens County District Attorney Melinda Katz. On day one, DA Katz established a Conviction Integrity Unit, the first of its kind in Queens County, and mapped out a detailed plan consistent with recognized best practices. I was honored to be appointed as the unit's director and began work on the DA's first day in office. One indication of DA Katz's leadership in this field is her selection of the CIU's leadership. Before joining the DA's office, I was most recently employed at the Innocence Project, where I worked exclusively on actual innocence cases involving DNA evidence. Throughout my career at the Innocence Project, with the CIU and in private practice, I've worked on the cases of 20 people who have ultimately been exonerated around the country and here in New York City. In early 2020, as the pandemic engulfed the city, we opened investigations, hired staff, created procedures governing the operation of the CIU to ensure that all cases submitted to the unit would be handled uniformly and with the care and attention that these extraordinary claims deserve. I would also be remiss if I didn't mention the work of our Deputy Director, Alexis Celestin, who passed away unexpectedly about two years ago. Alexis was a far Rockaway native, child of Guyanese immigrants, graduate of Hofstra and Harvard Law. She previously worked as a homicide prosecutor in Westchester and had done pro bono work at the Georgia Innocence Project. Alexis was instrumental in building out our CIU and fearlessly conducted investigations around the country, even internationally, at the height of the pandemic when many were working at home. Her work was instrumental in our early exonerations at the CIU, and we're all inspired by her example and her commitment to justice. And I appreciate the Council's giving me the opportunity to recognize her in the record of the city that she so valiantly served. The CIU currently has a dedicated staff of eight. We have three ADAs, including myself. We are in the hiring process to add a fourth ADA. We have paralegal assigned to each ADA, so that's three paralegals currently, and two experienced detectives who are dedicated to the unit. We work closely with our Victim Advocate Program because we recognize that the work that we do always involves crime victims and the work that we do in no way eliminates or obviates the trauma that they have experienced and continue to experience. The unit has received over 250 cases for review since it was established. We currently have approximately 20 open investigations with about 145 cases awaiting intake evaluation. Our unit has rejected approximately 70 cases either at the intake stage or after our investigation did not substantiate a claim that the case was worthy of vacature. We prioritize cases where defendants are currently incarcerated, but we have opened investigations in cases and vacated convictions for people who have been paroled or served out their sentence. The CIU has vacated more than 100 convictions over the past four years. Twelve of these vacatures were based on either a finding of actual innocence or newly discovered evidence, and these 12 are recognized in the National Registry of Exonerations. The CIU has vacated four convictions based on improper discrimination and jury selection. The remaining cases were vacated on fundamental fairness grounds as part of our review of cases involving police officers who were convicted of perjury or other offenses on the job. In addition to these important investigations, the CIU is dedicated to learning from the errors of the past. We routinely conduct trainings both within the office and out in the community about the work of the CIU and the subject matter of wrongful convictions. The CIU has also established an externship program where we teach Fordham Law students to help train new attorneys on these vital issues. The CIU's work in Queens and the work of the similar units represented here at this table is an important recognition that our criminal justice system is not perfect. We have an obligation to listen to people, even those who have been convicted of heinous crimes, and to take action where the evidence shows that we got it wrong. This is a commitment the District Attorney Katz made to our community, and I look forward to assisting the District Attorney in carrying out this important work as we move forward. And I look forward to the opportunity to answering any questions that you may have that will assist in the work of this committee.
Thank you for your testimony. I'd like to acknowledge that we have been joined by Councilmember Stevens and Councilmember Yeager. I'd like to perhaps start with some questions for the Brooklyn DA's office. Under the leadership of the late Ken Thompson, Queens County launched its Conviction Review Unit in 2014. As of last year, the unit had exonerated 500 individuals, 34 following lengthy reinvestigations, plus 468 vacated convictions that relied on the work of police officers who engaged in misconduct while performing their duties. The Brooklyn CRU has become a national model and has been instrumental in the establishment and improvement of other conviction review units across the country. I'd like to commend Diego Gonzalez for the work of the unit, but I have some questions on ways in which the work of the unit could be further enhanced. In an article published last year by the city, it was reported that, on average, the Brooklyn CRU took 1.36 years to review a wrongful conviction claim before the office made a formal recommendation. In one case, a review had been lingering for eight years. Time is obviously very precious for those who are awaiting these determinations. Can you tell us about the efforts your office is making to ensure innocent claims are reviewed in a more timely fashion?
Thank you, Chairman Salam. Yes, I joined the unit two years ago in January of 2022. And when I sat down with Diego Gonzalez, that was his primary concern, is that he was aware that there were cases, despite the great efforts of the unit, there were a lot of cases, some of which, as you point out, had been around for an inexcusably long time. I think part of that, of course, is that we, the Brooklyn jurisdiction, has a very high volume of cases under investigation at any given time. Currently, though, we have been working hard to clear out the older cases and get them resolved. We have, at any given time, upwards of 50 open investigations with probably 75 pending applications. So to address that, Diego Gonzalez has committed, I think, unprecedented resources. We have, on staff right now, I have 10 attorneys, including myself, as well as two detective investigators, three paralegals, and a bureau administrator. And I believe that that is probably the most well-resourced unit in the country. But nevertheless, as you point out, there is quite a backlog. We implemented a number of things coming in. When I came in, in consultation with the DA, we implemented a number of procedures and policy changes to try to address that real problem. I think the most significant was refining and really rewriting our application process and taking the lead actually from Queens and a couple other jurisdictions. We created an online intake form where applicants could apply, fill out a 10-page questionnaire that was designed to sort of gather the critical information about a conviction and the claims of innocence or otherwise wrongful conviction within the four corners of that document so that we can make quicker determinations as to whether or not to take a case in the first place. Prior to that, cases, applications, could be anywhere from a, you know, 300-page brief, from a, you know, well-funded attorney to a back-of-an-envelope application from a pro se applicant. And we thought that that inconsistency was obviously unfair and was slowing down the unit overall. So it was taking attorneys away from active investigations simply to review these applications, and it was a very laborious process. So I told the DA that my objective going in was to take our limit down from the average, I think you mentioned, of 1.4 years to six months to a year maximum to complete an investigation. And I'm proud that, since I've been there, any new cases that we brought in, we have managed mostly to stick to that goal. So other things that we've done, besides adding attorneys, since I got there, the DA has approved, I think, we've hired four to five new lawyers, which, as you know, is the amount that some jurisdictions have total on their staff. And that obviously helps us speed things up. We have embraced technological tools, case management tools that have really helped improve our speed on investigations. So I can be out in the field, or one of my attorneys can be out in the field, interviewing a witness and pull up a document right there on their phone to aid in that investigation. They can upload audio recordings that we take when interviewing witnesses in the field so that, I'm back at the office, I can review that interview immediately when it comes in. So I think, you know, to sum up, I think the introduction of technology has helped us a lot. The revision of our application process and the addition of personnel has really helped us speed up the process. But we are ever mindful of the statistics that you point out from the article in the city last year and always working to try to improve that.
Thank you. Also, it was reported that the Brooklyn CRU often requires a person raising an innocent claim and their attorney to sign a cooperation agreement, which limits their ability to publicly discuss the case while it's being reviewed. Critics claim that this is an unfair practice that contributes to long delays by preventing the use of public pressure to demand accountability. Does the Brooklyn CRU still require the signing of a cooperation agreement before they agree to look into an innocent claim? And are these agreements time-limited, or can parties break the agreement if notice is provided?
Thank you for your question. We do not require parties to sign a cooperation agreement. We look at it as an actual benefit to parties. If they're willing to sign a cooperation agreement, we pride ourselves on our transparency and on our sort of collegiality. We often work in close consultation with defense counsel as they pursue their client's claim. So, and we sign that cooperation agreement because we want to have a good-faith relationship with them and feel, you know, reassured that we can share information with them and it's not, we're not going to be fighting a PR battle at the same time that we're trying to do the right thing by their clients. So there is a clause in that cooperation agreement that requires that neither side do anything with respect to the media with regard to our investigation. I'll tell you frankly, it's not an enforceable agreement. Occasionally, we do have situations where people break that promise. But we think it's in the best interests of the case and getting the investigation as far down the road as quickly as possible that we agree not to go to the media unless and until the case is resolved.
Thank you. Now I'd like to turn to Manhattan. In Manhattan, the Post Conviction Justice Unit handles reviews of wrongful convictions and also look to address the root cause behind them. Can you describe the root cause analysis that is undertaken when your office has determined a wrongful conviction occurred? In particular, does this analysis involve input from external experts to ensure objectivity? And does it result in a corrective action plan and ways to measure progress?
Thank you so much for that question. Our, it's a little bit early in our practice to answer about root causes in a fulsome way. We've only been here for two years. And so what I'd ask is to get back to you on how that process develops as we put it online. But I do agree that the things that you mentioned are best practices for root cause analysis.
I'd like to turn to the Bronx. In 2020, after Detective Joseph Franco was fired by the NYPD for making false statements about narcotics arrests, the Bronx DA's Conviction Integrity Bureau undertook a review of Bronx cases that hinged on this detective's testimony and sworn statements. Last year, 67 cases that were tied to this ex-NYPD detective were dismissed, bringing the total to 324 cases in total that were dismissed in the Bronx after a review by DA Clark's Conviction Integrity Bureau. Can you talk about specific lessons and any new protocols implemented as a result of the review of the cases handled by Detective Franco?
Thank you for that question. I will say with Detective Franco cases, we worked in conjunction with Brooklyn and Manhattan because Detective Franco had worked in all three boroughs. So we did a comprehensive review of those cases, and he had worked in the Bronx for many years. I'm not going to say the exact number because I don't remember off the top of my head. But we do keep track of bad behavior engaged in by NYPD, whether it is presented to us by simply reading about it in the press or if a person, an applicant, brings it to our attention. So we are in the process of auditing cases of several other officers who have engaged in perjurious behavior.
I'd like to turn to the Special Narcotics Prosecutor, perhaps, to maybe offer some more insight as to Detective Franco as well.
Yeah, as I recall, the actual discovery of a contradiction came in one of our cases as we were preparing it to go into the grand jury, if I recall. And if I'm inaccurate, I'll get back to you with the accurate facts. And you see, as I described, we can't, we're not empowered to do that kind of investigation prosecution. It's not within our jurisdiction. So if I'm remembering right, it was, yes, it was referred to the Manhattan DA's office at that time. So the investigation goes on. We freeze our cases awaiting their findings. Because what happened with all these cases is that he was, at the conclusion, you know, charges were brought against the detective. And because of that, he was believed to be on the part of all the offices that had previously worked with him, to be an unreliable witness who had engaged in bad conduct, which obviously hadn't been disclosed because it occurred just in that instance. And certainly, anything going forward would have been dismissed. But we also found him to be an unreliable witness. So then the review process goes on. And anybody can join in with me on this because we all did it. You go through the cases to determine on which cases he was involved as a critical witness, identify that body of cases, and then go back and dismiss the cases. You know, if you've found him to be somebody who had a critical role in those cases. He was a very active detective. He worked with special narcotics and probably not with us as much as he worked. I think a long time in the Bronx, he worked in Brooklyn, he worked in Manhattan. And so all of the boroughs took a look at, and this is where I described in my testimony, the DA's offices have gotten so much better at collaborating with each other than in past days, past years, past decades. When there was a problem with an officer, I don't think there was the kind of coordination that we see today. So that was an example of, you know, it was a, a bad situation, but a very good indication of how there's a uniform approach to this and how we help each other out when those situations come up. But it is, my recollection is that the actual identification of the conduct was in one of our cases.
Thank you. Follow-up question for the Bronx. The Conviction Integrity Unit in the Bronx currently does not allow defense councils to look through their file, unlike every other conviction integrity unit in the city. What is the reason for that? And will you agree to change that practice so that a person wrongfully convicted in the Bronx is treated with the same, is treated the same as a person wrongfully accused in Staten Island, Queens, Manhattan, and Brooklyn?
Thank you for that question. Because I'm going, I'm going to clarify, I'm not sure where you got that information from. But those decisions are made on a case-by-case basis. And there have been instances where we have opened our files to the defense in the Bronx. We remove certain sensitive materials, as I believe they do in other counties. But we do not have a blanket rule that we do not open our files to defense counsel. That's inaccurate.
Thank you. Turning to Queens. In 2021, a group of law professors filed grievances against 21 prosecutors in the Queens District Attorney's Office alleging they had engaged in a range of professional misconduct, including lying in court and withholding evidence from the defense. These grievances were based on court records that were there, in court records. They were based on court records where there was a finding of prosecutorial misconduct. In many cases, the misconduct was so severe that it required overturning a wrongful conviction and releasing someone from prison. To your knowledge, did any of these prosecutors suffer any professional consequences for their actions in that, that in several cases led to wrongful convictions?
Not, oh, excuse me. Thank you for the question, Chair Salam. I have personally not tracked every disciplinary case that was pending as part of that, that group. And the focus of the Conviction Integrity Unit is on individual claims of actual innocence and wrongful conviction. The Queens District Attorney's Office is a, a law, essentially a law firm with hundreds of ADAs with its own both internal disciplinary procedures and, and reporting activities. And, and we rely on the district attorney's procedures and focus on the core mission of, of investigating claims.
Thank you. DA Katz has said that when cases of misconduct are found, prosecutors will be put into a vigorous retraining program. Can you provide specifics about the nature of that program? And how does the office handle if someone repeatedly engages in professional misconduct?
Again, I, I would not comment on individual employee discipline or remedial actions that might take place within the office. We, just as an example of a more office-wide practice, we had an instance of repeated discrimination and proper discrimination in jury selection by a, an ADA over the course of about a decade. We, you know, obviously conducted a review of that, that particular ADA's trials that resulted in a conviction and have agreed to vacate four of those. That, that review is ongoing. We also conducted an audit of selected trials by other ADAs who were in bureaus with that ADA to make sure that there was no similar evidence of discrimination in those trials. And thankfully, we did not find similar evidence of discrimination. But based on our review of, of the work that happened over the course of a decade in the 90s, we've conducted two trainings office-wide and, and really reviewed our, the way that we train ADAs on jury selection to make sure that we are up to, you know, constitutional and ethical standards.
Thank you. I'm going to turn to the members on the DA's as well, starting with Councilmember Joseph.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning to each and every one of you. I have a couple of questions across the board. How many wrongful conviction cases have been overturned in New York City in the past decade? And what were the common factors contributing to these errors? We can start with Brooklyn and then we'll work our way down.
Thank you, Councilmember Joseph. I, I think we could probably do the math amongst us right now. I, I said that the, the CRU over the past decade in Brooklyn has exonerated 37 defendants. I'm not sure, nine in Manhattan.
Twelve have been exonerated in Queens, according to the National Registry.
Talk into the mic, ma'am.
So the Bronx Conviction Integrity Unit hasn't been in place for 10 years. District Attorney Clark wasn't elected until 2016. But I know prior to her election, under Rob Johnson, even though there was no formal conviction integrity unit, there were investigations where the district attorney did agree to vacate convictions based on investigations by his appeals bureau or the investigations division. So I don't have those numbers prior.
Can you get that back to the committee, please?
I will, I will.
Thank you.
My best, thank you.
And similarly, in Manhattan, the, the nine have been in the last two years that I've been in the office. There were prior under District Attorney Vance's conviction integrity unit. And of course, prior to that, Robert Morgenthau also vacated wrongful convictions. And I can get back to you with the data on the last decade.
I know Chair Salam asked this question, go ahead, Queens.
Oh, yeah, and I'd also like to clarify that there have been exonnerations. For example, the last day of the prior administration, Felipe Rodriguez's conviction was vacated. And we can certainly provide you with an exact number, but it's also worth consulting. The National Registry of Exonnerations has a, an excellent breakdown of exonnerations in, across the nation, but certainly in the city and divided by borough.
So how does the NYPD's Internal Affairs Bureau address allegations of misconduct or coercion that may have contributed to wrongful convictions?
Thank you, Chair, Chairwoman Joseph. I, I'll just jump in here because in my.
So Brooklyn came prepared today, huh?
Well, you're just asking questions that are in my wheelhouse. I, I was fortunate when I was at the Manhattan DA's office to be the deputy chief of the Public Corruption Unit, which in addition to investigating and prosecuting wrongdoing by, by public officials, also had a very robust job, or did a robust job investigating and prosecuting corrupt police officers. And in that role, we worked very closely with IAB, usually conducting investigations in tandem. And at least at that point in time, IAB was actually very much involved and, and, and under good leadership and, and really was engaged in those cases.
Anyone else want to add on now? So what's the impact of New York City Wrongful Conviction Commission on identifying and addressing systematic issues such as race, socioeconomic status, as to contributing to wrongful convictions?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
What are the factors?
The factors that.
Socioeconomic status. The fact that I may not be able to afford an attorney. What are the factors that could produce wrongful convictions?
Okay, I, I, you certainly are identifying, as someone else mentioned before, that the, the vast majority of wrongly convicted people are, are men and women of color.
Correct.
And, and so that's absolutely correct. But, but as, as far as the causes of wrongful convictions, I alluded to that in my opening remarks. And I'll just, if it's okay with you, read a list of what, in my experience, appear to be the 10 most common factors that contribute to wrongful convictions. And I'm sure.
And what are we doing to reform that policy? What are we doing for better practices, right? We're learning from all of this, right? We're, we have people of color that are entering the system. I'm personally a mother of four black boys, right? So this is personal work to us. And Chair Salam, who's lived experience, is sitting here today. So what are we doing to address those root causes that allow people of color to enter jail on a more, more than any other race in the city?
I can tell you that, as I mentioned in my opening remarks, there are any number of things that we're doing in Brooklyn to get this information out there, simply to make people aware and break down wrongful convictions in a way, a deeply analytical way, so that all stakeholders in the criminal justice system can have the information they need to then address it in their individual roles as prosecutors, defense attorneys, judges, members of the legislature even. But I can tell you that there are additional things that I think could be done. I, you know, I think it's apparent to all of us in, in investigating these cases that there are shortcomings in the system as a whole, right? Like we don't have enough resources to adequately investigate cases. The defense bar is radically under-resourced. And in, in your average case, in every case that we do, you'll see in our reports, there is some element of the defense bar not being effective in their counsel. Not because they're not good lawyers, but because they don't have enough resources to adequately investigate a case. From my perspective, having worked in corruption, having worked in the private sector on wrongful convictions, and now running the unit in Brooklyn, I think we could go a long way to preventing these things going forward by simply having, funding the defense bar so that they can kick off real investigative work, write at arraignments. And also, I think that on the prosecutorial side, we need to be much more involved much earlier. Almost every case we all handle is a homicide. And especially back in the, in the 90s and the 80s, the involvement of the prosecution in a homicide investigation was very limited. At best, you were signing search warrants and taking a video statement after however many hours of interrogation by the police department. I think prosecutors getting involved much earlier in that process would lead to better results.
So you can say there's a lot of lessons learned, right, Chair? Sorry, Chair, I'm just gonna, so a lot of lessons learned.
Absolutely.
And I'm hoping these practice, these lessons are going into practices. So we're not having this conversation, that your system is getting better. How do you compensate wrongful, people that are wrongfully convicted? What's the compensation?
We do not currently, we're not involved in the compensation process. Now, obviously, as, as wrongly convicted people are exonerated, they seek civil redress. And they, I, I know that they depend a lot on the information that we put in our reports and on the, the, the individual bases on which we base our exoneration. But we incorporate our report by reference every time we do an exoneration so that whatever we found is available to them in, in minute detail.
What's the turnaround time for getting all the, get their records cleared so they can move on with their lives?
You mean for them getting compensated?
Not compensation to wrongful conviction. How long does, what's the turnaround time for it to be removed from their records?
For the, for the conviction to be removed?
Right.
You know, that's a great question. I don't know the answer to that, but I will.
And you will get it back to the committee, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'm, I'm very appreciative of.
May I, may I answer the question?
Sure.
Councilmember Joseph, you asked about if somebody's exonerated, how long does it take to get it off the record? What typically happens in court is that as soon as the judge announces that the conviction is vacated, the indictment is dismissed, the records are sealed. So that should happen pretty much immediately.
Thank you. I think I'm going to use one of your statements that I recently learned was baseline, right? We need to create baseline processes so that we get the opportunity to have like a standard. I think New York City in general would be really powerful to be that beacon of, of hope for the rest of the nation as we really address this in what I call righteous collaboration. I'm going to turn to Councilmember Holden.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you all for your testimony. I, I want to go back to Brooklyn only because you seem to be an expert on this, which your experience, you, you could probably tell us a lot more about procedure. But I want to just mention some, you said you had an online intake form?
Yes, sir.
And when was that started?
Well, the, as I said, when I started at the office two years ago, that was sort of one of the first things that, that I noticed was kind of holding us back. And I had worked closely with Mr., with ADA Benjet when I was in the private sector, working on a wrongful conviction case in Queens. So I reached out to him and, and he showed me their on-take, their online application form. I talked to the Dallas office, which has a leader in the field. And I think I also reviewed the Philadelphia DA's offices form. And so we created the form almost immediately. I think it went online about six months later. But what you find in, in this, in this world, in the innocence community, these things, once you put one paper copy out there, it's in every state prison system. And, and so we started receiving applications almost immediately.
So does, does all the DA offices use that online intake form?
Manhattan has an online intake form that is public facing.
We do.
Yes, I think each, each office has their own individual form.
Yes, and, but, so it's not, it's not a 10-pager like maybe Brooklyn, right? You said yours.
Ours, ours is 10 pages. I think everyone has sort of similarly, similarly.
It would be nice though, as the Chair mentioned, it would be nice to have the same procedures, the same forms that, that we can coordinate citywide. Because it, it just seems to be, I think that's more fair. Because obviously, if, I'm, I'm just going to make up an example. But let's say Queens, because it's my, doesn't have the car, you know, the really, has a two-pager, let's say. I don't know what you have, but let's just say that hypothetically. You may not get all the information you need. And you may not have, it might not be as fair as Brooklyn. And again, it's just, I don't, I don't want Melinda Katz to come after me. I'm just using it as an example, but.
Just because you mentioned Queens, the purpose of these forms is really to granulate out the claim of innocence. So a person is convicted, if they're convicted of something they didn't do, they're sent to prison, they, they don't, they're not lawyers. They may not have the educational background to really understand all of the issues. Sometimes they get advice from jailhouse lawyers, which may be helpful, may not be. And so these are directed as point-by-point questions. What is your case about? Who do you want us to talk to? Is there evidence that you want us to test? And we get a wide variety of responses. Again, because many people are not in a position to advocate for themselves. And so I, I think that these forms are important. But, but I don't want to undersell the amount of independent work that we have to do to give these folks a fair hearing, to really hear them out, to ask the questions that they may not know to provide answers.
Yeah, just, and, and let me just go on procedure. Once you get a form, you, you, let's say you look at it, is it looked at by one attorney? Or a clerk or somebody in the office that, you know?
Our unit collaborates together. So we'll assign a, an intake case to an, an individual attorney. They will review the form, they will pull various records from the case. Because again, these forms are, you know, understandably not the only thing that we can go by. So we'll pull trial records, appellate briefs, sometimes even the original file. And it can be 40, 50, even 100 hours of work to really evaluate a case.
I even get them, I guess other council members get them, from people that are incarcerated. They, they write us very long letters. They write us very long letters, and we turn it over, obviously, to the DA, because obvious, what do we, you know, how do we evaluate anything like this? But I'm just curious, Brooklyn has 10 attorneys assigned?
Yes, sir.
To the CRU? And you said you had four to five new hires?
Since I've been there, the DA has approved, I think, four to five new hires.
In addition to the 10, or is that including?
No, no. So when I, we've lost one or two people since I got there, so I think maybe we had eight total with me, or seven total with me when I got there, and DA Gonzalez has approved a few additional hires since then.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, again, just on procedure, Chair, if I may, just follow up on that. If you find somebody is wrongfully convicted, let's say, and they're out of jail, out of prison, what happens to the case now, to find the real person that committed the crime? I mean, is there another, that goes back to the NYPD, and tell us that, tell us that procedure?
Yeah, that's a great question. We do, with some frequency, end up identifying the person that we believe to be the actual killer in the case, which is, like I said, they're usually homicide cases. Not in all of them, not in the majority of them, but in a significant percentage of them. And the DA is, of course, always interested in kicking the tires on that case to see if we might be able to exonerate the wrong person and simultaneously indict the right person. As you can imagine, cases that are 25, 30 years old, I don't know if you have any criminal trial experience, but that's a hard case to indict, and an especially hard case to try. But we will, in our office, where we think there's a shot, the DA will assign a senior homicide attorney to do that pre-indictment investigation and see if we can successfully indict. Now, part of that analysis is, how confident are we that we could win the case at trial, right? Because what we don't want to do is put victims through the pain of, you know, thinking we got the right person, but the case is so old and the challenges of convicting at trial are so high, that there's not a realistic chance that we will be able to convict. And as you can imagine, the chances of getting a plea in that situation are quite low, because the actual culprit is probably pretty confident that they're gonna have a good shot at trial. So, it's a very careful analysis, but we do conduct that analysis.
Thank you. Thank you Chair.
Thank you as well. Just like to acknowledge, we've been joined by Councilmember Palladino as well. Actually, the part of your question got me to thinking, how many people would be needed to actually address? Like, if we had the opportunity to say, well, across the board, we need 10 people, 10 people that actually review these cases, is there a suggestion, you know, per borough or collaboratively, on how many people may be needed? In the best case scenario?
I would love 30 more attorneys. I mean, really, it's, the reality is, as, as I think promising it is that all the, that the special narcotics prosecutor and all the DAs in the city have, are on board with robust units to address these problems, the problem, as you know, Chair, is enormous. And just fixing what happened in the past, you know, I really could use 20 more attorneys. I mean, I feel extremely fortunate, and I get teased all the time by my colleagues here that, about the resources that I have, but the truth is, we are working all the time to try to resolve these, and we still just have so many cases that we've accepted for investigation, and it takes time. So, the answer is, we could use a lot. I don't know what the number is.
Got it. So I'd like to turn to Councilmember Areola.
Thank you Chair. Director, from Melinda Katz's office. That's my home borough, I represent the 32nd Council District. You know, you really did answer so many of my questions in your testimony, I want to thank you for that. And I also want to say thank you to our District Attorney for establishing a convictions investigation unit. And in the short time, I was very impressed with the numbers, where you have already overturned 100 convictions, you have 145 waiting in intake, 250 for review, you explained what the procedure was for the review, so I appreciate that. And I'd also like to tell you what I see on our end, which is that your office works very well with stakeholders, with victims, with the NYPD, with the community, doing the investigations, being right there, you know, so that wrongful convictions, the best way to reduce a wrongful conviction is by arresting the right person. And I think that your office really has that right. So I want to thank you for that. So my question is, are there any future plans to enhance the capabilities of your current unit?
We, we're always trying to enhance the work that we're doing. We, we're building staff, you know, if Charlie doesn't hire all the available candidates. But we're building out our staff. It's, you know, it's been a difficult market to find people, and I think it's important to have a diversity of experience in these units, and so you can't just throw, you know, 30 line ADAs into this job. And so, we really are trying to enhance the work that we're doing by building staff, by increasing our outreach to doing education, and really working through the demand that we have in the cases that are still awaiting our review.
Again, thank you for all your hard work, and we thank our District Attorney for the work that she does to keep the borough that we represent safe. And she is, she's hard on crime where she can be, and she knows when to pull back, and we appreciate that, so...
Thank you Councilmember.
Thank you.
Chair Salam, can I just make one addendum to the, to your previous question about resources?
Yes.
You know, part and parcel of hiring as many people as we do and would like to, obviously, is, it's a huge budgetary concern for the offices. I know in Brooklyn, we have no dedicated funding from the city to run these units. So, we exist the way that we do, simply because the DA, DA's Thompson and Gonzalez decided to shift resources to the unit, and have shifted significant resources. But you have to remember that that always comes out of the office's bottom line, and I think the city could really help us all out in getting to justice on these cases by figuring out a way to independently fund at least part of the work that we do.
Thank you for acknowledging that. You know, I've always said, and have been hearing a lot lately, that if we don't pay for it now, we'll have to pay for it later. And I would rather for us to be able to figure out a way to pay for it now. You know, as a follow-up question, I want to ask, is there professional diversity amongst the staff, and how many attorneys come from non-professional backgrounds? Is there also value in having staff with diverse professional experience? And that's, you know, just to the general.
Thank you for that question, Chair. I do think that professional diversity is incredibly important in this work, and particularly for us in Manhattan, taking on a collaborative, non-adversarial approach to our investigations. It's important to have a number of different viewpoints. And to that end, the attorneys in our unit, I'm very proud to say, include very experienced, longtime prosecutors, folks who have worked in the New York State Court system as court attorneys, and people who have worked in both innocence work, civil rights, and civil rights work, as well as being public defenders.
I would like to add to this, just because I think I'm alone on this panel, as the lone career prosecutor, absent my five years in the private sector. And I think it's an interesting approach that Brooklyn has taken. I think early on in this work, it was extremely important to have people from the defense bar and the innocence community leading these units, because I think the mindset of prosecutors had not yet begun to turn and recognize the very real problem of things like false confessions and bad identifications. I think we're moving toward a good place, where prosecutors are more and more wrapping their heads around this. When I lecture the rookie class every year on the work that we do, I get a handful of people that immediately come up and want to transfer to the unit, and we have to say no, because the criteria for joining our unit is that you have to have, A, significant trial experience, like 10 years or more, and you also have to have either corruption experience and/or wrongful conviction experience. In other words, you, we have for a long time been prosecutors only, but they had to be prosecutors who had already confronted these issues in other lines of work, and therefore had accepted that these things happen. You know, not all cops are bad, most cops are great, some cops are bad, right? And once you've wrapped your head around that, then you can accept that wrongful confessions, or false confessions do happen, and bad identifications, and that people fall victim to tunnel vision and cases go wrong. So, I think we're alone, we do, we recently hired a colleague from the defense bar who had significant wrongful conviction experience and significant trial experience, and I'm very excited about that, because I think it brings a perspective to our staff that we didn't have before. And we have a few other people with some defense experience, but we are largely career prosecutors, but prosecutors with those critical levels of experience that I mentioned.
Thank you. Just as a follow-up to the body as well, how do your offices engage with external stakeholders, including the NYPD, to promote conviction integrity and prevent future wrongful convictions?
We, you know, it's funny, that's part of the symposium that we're, that we're all holding tomorrow, is gonna be talking about, you know, property and records retrieval from the police department, which, as you might imagine, is a major component of the work that we do, and can sometimes be challenging, because I think leadership in the police department is, you know, attended the hearing a couple months ago, when you were questioning the police department witnesses, and I think it was really great to hear how on-board the PD is with the work that we're doing, and on trying to coordinate with us. But, as you can imagine, that's a relatively new practice. And I can tell you that after that, I reached out to one of the NYPD legal guys who connected me with the person in PD who deals with records retrieval, and we had a fantastic conversation, and he set us up with a whole process to retrieve records and make that easier, and he will be coming to the symposium tomorrow to speak with us. So, I think that relationship is improving. It hasn't always been great historically, but I think, I think just like the prosecutors are changing, I think PD is also coming along, so our relationship is good. I'm trying to think of other stakeholders that...
I would, I would just add to say that we're, we're very, we're very happy with our relationship with the New York City Office of the Chief Medical Examiner. They have dedicated criminalists who work on post-conviction matters, and have been fantastic partners to us, and we just hope that they also continue to get more resources and work with us more.
Let me also say that we work very closely with the detective squads all over Queens, again, to obtain records, to talk to detectives who worked on cases that we're investigating, and the, you know, the NYPD has been very cooperative in that regard. The other agency within NYPD that I want to really mention is the latent print section. They are extremely collaborative with us. Often, where physical evidence may have been lost or destroyed, those latent print files still exist, and that work can identify perpetrators and exonerate innocent people, and in fact, their work was instrumental in one of our exonerations recently. Also, just as a small example of working with NYPD to address the problems that come up, we were working on a case where it turned out that a, two years after a conviction, a fingerprint match was generated through a computer system, but was never delivered to the District Attorney's office. And it took many years for us to then discover that, pursue that lead, in a way that was very important to the case. And so, we've now established procedures with NYPD to ensure that if, if these cold hits, for lack of a better word, come up, that those will be delivered to the District Attorney's office, as well as to the precinct and NYPD chain of command.
Just for clarity, and maybe this is for my personal clarity, that particular hit, is that something that can also be applied to cases, like DNA cases and things of that nature? The reason why I ask that is because, in the Central Park jogger case, the thing that just perplexed me was the fact that they had DNA in the case, but the DNA didn't match any of the defendants. That DNA finally found its match 13 years later. And I'm just wondering, in that process, here the individual was arrested some months after raping the Central Park jogger. And I'm curious to know that, and maybe the, maybe the process just wasn't started yet, but if those things can be put into some type of a machine, if you will, like, for lack of a better word, that allows for the database or the computer to find the match?
Yeah, that's exactly how it works with DNA. I believe that's also true with the fingerprint system. And so, again, as technology has advanced, those systems have advanced, so if a fingerprint was uploaded in the mid-'80s, it may not match up today because of the image quality, or, you know, any number of variations could happen. And so, that technology is increasing, but there certainly, that's how these are set up, that's how Cold Case uses these systems, and likewise, that's how we can take advantage of those systems.
And, you know, whenever we get, although most of the cases we have today do not involve DNA, those are sort of the low-hanging fruit in terms of wrongful convictions that were addressed early on, but, you know, with some frequency, we have Innocence Project or another advocate come and say, we have this case, and the technology has improved over the last 10 years, can you please retest it? And it's not something that we ever object to, obviously. It's truly a non-adversarial process in that respect, and if we get a DNA hit and exonerate someone, fantastic.
And one other factor you should be aware of is that when they, when somebody gets arrested, and they run DNA, you can get a hit on an old case, and that happened in one of our cases, where we ended up with an exoneration. DNA hit to somebody that was not prosecuted or convicted. We received that information, the hit, the notification, was provided to defense counsel in this particular, and this was not, this was not conviction integrity, because we weren't even involved at the point. The original trial prosecutor sent the notification to the defense counsel, appellate defense counsel, the case hadn't been even appealed yet, so the defendant had assigned counsel. And that notification, in conjunction with a bunch of other evidence developed by defense counsel, was brought to us at conviction integrity, and we ended up with a vacature. So that does happen, under the current system.
Thank you. Seeing that we have no more questions for this panel, I would like to thank you for your testimony, and you're dismissed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so, yes. We'll now hear from a panel from the public defenders organizations. We have Sergio De La Palva, Bruce Bryan, Elizabeth Felber. We have Sergio de la Palva, Bruce Bryan, Elizabeth Felber. So whenever you're ready, you can take any order you would like.
Sure. Good afternoon. Thank you so much for another hearing on this critical topic, which I think is really the most pressing human rights issue currently that our city and state is facing. I'm Sergio de la Palva, I'm the Legal Director of New York County Defender Services. We will be submitting extensive written testimony on all the topics being covered, but I want to limit my discussion to the Challenging Wrongful Convictions Act. Last year, Resolution 1479 of 23 called for immediate passage of that bill. I'm asking this body to send another more recent message, again, calling for passage of the Challenging Wrongful Convictions Act. I think certainly there have been great strides, but what we have to ask ourselves is what is New York's current messaging on wrongful convictions? And when we look at that, when we look at the current state of the law, we see that it's a dark message. If you are an individual who pled guilty to a crime you did not commit and you do not have DNA evidence, New York's message to you is essentially too bad. You pled guilty to a crime you didn't convict, commit, perhaps you're rotting in prison for that crime, certainly the black mark of that crime is following you for the rest of your life, but again, too bad. We won't undertake even the medium level of work that it takes to amend our statute to bring ourselves in line with the rest of the country. Now, when I say the statute and the one that's the subject of the Challenging Wrongful Convictions Act, I'm speaking of criminal procedure law, 440.10. And how is it that I know that this statute? And by the way, everything you've heard this morning, we talk about conviction integrity units, there, CPL 44010 is the only game in town in New York. When defenders and these units agree that a conviction needs to be reversed, they go into court and they make use of this tool. So what's wrong with this tool as it currently exists? Well, the truth is it's completely out of date, it's out of step with the latest findings in the field of wrongful convictions, it's out of step with the rest of the country. How do I know that? Well, it doesn't recognize innocence. Think about that for a moment, and I want to draw your attention to a lot of what led to this advocacy in our area. In 2018, New York Court of Appeals had this to say in a decision, People versus Tiger, it indulges me, I'll quote, "The first two lines of the decision by the Court of Appeals when discussing our wrongful conviction statute." Quote, "The issue presented by this appeal is whether a claim of actual innocence lies under CPL 44010 to vacate a judgment of conviction obtained upon a defendant's guilty plea. We hold that defendant's actual innocence claim is not a ground for relief." Now, this is not a finding by the court that Natasha Tiger, the appellant in that case, was not actually innocent. It was not a finding that while she may have been actually innocent, she didn't rise to some standard of demonstrating that in a courtroom. It was an assertion by New York's highest court that innocence in that context didn't matter, had no relevance to the question. And when I tell, you know, average layperson that, they have trouble believing that. They, they can't believe that, and they often point to DNA exoneration's. Because New York's message is that unless it's a DNA, potential DNA exoneration, innocence doesn't matter. Does DNA deserve that special status? The answer is complicated, it's yes and no, really. It's no, because the vast majority of convictions in New York, as you've heard this morning, don't involve DNA. And by that, I, I mean more than just that they weren't part of the prosecution, I mean that there's no conceivable role for DNA to play in establishing the innocence of the person applying for relief, it's just simply not relevant to that case. DNA, however, is highly critical in the sense that it helps us identify clear-cut, uncontroversial wrongful convictions, and then allows us to analyze those and see what went wrong. So DNA is very useful in telling us, this is clearly a wrongful conviction, DNA establishes that, but what happened in the case that led to the wrongful conviction? When we do that, we find the thing called false confessions. We find that people will actually, given the right circumstances, confess to something serious, a serious crime that they did not commit. It's not a great leap of logic to determine then that people also plead guilty to crimes they did not commit. These are not opinions, this is not my radical recategorization of this claim, this is fact. And states have recognized that throughout and amended their statutes accordingly. New York has chosen for at least six years, or coming up on six years, to just stick its head in the sand, not acknowledge this, not expand their statute in the appropriate way. You know, because before the Tiger decision, this actually was an open question, there was some disagreement, does New York recognize innocent claims, innocence claims following a guilty plea where there's no DNA? It's an open question. Court of Appeals came in and said, no, we don't. We don't. And everybody, I can tell you, in our community expected at that point, well, okay, it seems the Court of Appeals has identified a weakness in our statute, let's get our legislative bodies to quickly address this, coming up on six years and counting, there has been zero action on this issue. That's unacceptable. Status quo, silence on this is acquiescence. As I said, this is a urgent human rights issue. Challenging Wrongful Convictions Act must be passed this year, and this body must do everything in its power to impose that kind of pressure on Albany to make sure that happens. Thank you very much.
Thank you as well.
Good afternoon, Chair Salam, Councilmember, Council. Thank you for having the second most important hearing on wrongful convictions. My name is Elizabeth Felber, and I head the wrongful conviction unit at the Legal Aid Society. According to the National Registry of Exoneration, the two leading causes of wrongful convictions are false testimony and official misconduct. Official misconduct is mainly defined as withholding exculpatory evidence from defense counsel by police and district attorneys. False testimony is introduced at trial when the evidence is not thoroughly investigated or the result of willful blindness or tunnel vision. I would like to share a few examples of these errors from our own cases of exonerated clients. When one client was arrested for a murder that took place at a party he had attended but left early after he drank too much and got sick, when he was arrested, he told the detective that he had about seven people who could come forward, not only to test seeing him get sick, but they saw him leave, and he also told him about a taxi he could provide. Neither the lead detective nor the prosecutor ever investigated his alibi and instead indicted him for murder. In that same case, the only eyewitness who testified at trial falsely claimed that he cut hair for a living, and in summation, the DA characterized him as someone who had been in trouble when he was young, but now he was a hard-working family man. In reality, he was a major drug dealer who was under investigation by the federal government and, at the time of our client's trial, was selling kilos of drugs to a confidential informant. This information was never given to defense counsel. Our client did 18 years before he was exonerated, and the prosecutor is now a judge. In another case, the only eyewitness who knew the real shooter in the case saw our client entering the courtroom just as she was about to testify. She turned to the prosecutor and she told her they had the wrong person. Prosecutor brushed her off and said, you know, he's been locked up for two years, people do things to disguise their appearance, and she never shared that information with the judge or defense counsel. That prosecutor was ultimately promoted and currently holds a top position in her office. In three of our clients' cases, the eyewitnesses testifying to see, testified to seeing our clients from a distance where it would have been impossible to identify anyone. We don't know if anyone in law enforcement ever visited the scene themselves to see if these identifications were possible. Either way, they relied on false testimony to secure our clients' convictions. These examples are from past wrongful convictions where thankfully, our clients were eventually exonerated, but those practices are still ongoing in real time, and our list of people seeking our assistance continues to grow daily. Additionally, as exemplified by these examples today, prosecutors who fail to disclose exculpatory evidence or permit false testimony at trial are rarely, if ever, held to account. Time constraints prevent me from detailing the many other instances of misconduct and lack of accountability, but suffice it to say, these were not outliers. We are grateful to this committee's oversight and commitment to finding solutions to ending practices within the police and DA's offices that contribute to wrongful convictions. Before I close, I would just like to highlight some suggestions for best practices for the city's conviction integrity units based on our working with them. And here I would just say, I think, Chair, you mentioned some, and I heard some being suggested by the last speakers, and I would also like to add that where we have worked truly collaboratively on reinvestigating cases with these units, there have been examples of the kind of justice that these units can produce, but I'm of the belief that we can all do better and there's a lot more justice to be done. So with that in mind, all of the CIEs, CIUs need to be fully funded. You heard here today, 10 was the most that any unit had. Sufficient staffing for both attorneys and investigators. The attorney should have sufficient number of, the unit should have sufficient number of attorneys so that their investigations should last no more than two years on average. And I think you heard someone talk about this as well, but there should be a cross-section of the staffing of attorneys so that the attorney should include those prior defense attorneys and not only prosecutors, because bringing both perspectives will create a more balanced unit. These cases require in-depth reinvestigation, so there should be at least one investigator for every two to three attorneys. To guard against institutional bias, those investigators should not work in another department within the DA's office at the same time they are investigating wrongful convictions. All of the offices must have open file discovery. For these units to flourish, there must be trust between the parties, and to have trust, there must be transparency. Cases involving claims of DA misconduct should not be evaluated by a prosecutor who was in the office at the time. Instead, they should be assigned to either an attorney with no prior connection to the office or assigned to a different CIU altogether. And lastly, where a pro se applicant writes to a CIU with what appears to be a meritorious claim, the CIU should reach out and ask one of the institutional providers to represent that applicant. Finally, on an unrelated matter, we urge this committee and city council to pass the resolution in support of the Jury of Our Peers Act, introduced by public advocate Williams. This act would end the lifetime ban of jury service by restoring the right to serve on a jury upon a person's release from incarceration. In Manhattan, an estimated 40% of black men who would otherwise be eligible to serve on a jury are disqualified due to a prior felony conviction. This stark racial disparity occurs, exists across our state, and this act will finally end New York's lifetime ban, creating juries that are more truly represent one's peers. Studies show that diverse juries are more deliberative juries. This act will help to curtail wrongful convictions and bring more fairness into the criminal legal system. Thank you for this opportunity to testify at this important hearing.
Thank you as well.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Salam. And members of our Committee on Public Safety, my name is Bruce Bryan, and I'm currently a client advocate at Queens Defenders. Prior to this role, I was wrongly convicted and served 29 years in New York State prisons. I just want to thank you for this opportunity today to be able to come and share before you. And I want to commend the city council for considering this array of proposed legislative reforms, calling for a systemic shift in both the wrongful conviction claims process and decarceration landscape. Your leadership on this issue is an important step towards our city's reckoning with both our current crisis of mass incarceration and our serious wrongful conviction problem and intertwined state of affairs. According to the National Registry, as you've heard earlier, New York State has the third highest level of wrongful convictions in the United States. Despite the current legislative regime making it extremely difficult for those incarcerated to challenge their wrongful conviction acts, there have been more than 369 people exonerated since 1989. Each number represents a life, a human being. Further marginalized members of our community are unacceptable and they're over-representative, right? They're, they're over-representative in terms of the color spectrum. The Innocence Project notes that black people account for 40% of the approximately 2.3 million incarcerated people in the United States and nearly 50% of exonerates, despite making up just 13% of the United States population. Those numbers are astounding. This is in large part because they are over-policed and often presumed guilty and often frequently denied a fair, fair shot at justice. Proposed resolutions relating to forensic DNA testing and requesting certain DNA test comparisons would help create additional and necessary avenues for those incarcerated to challenge the absolute injustice of a wrongful conviction. Further, I call on the legislature to pass proposed resolution aimed at providing innocent people who have been wrongly convicted an avenue to be able to recover restitution and damages against the state for time served. I am here today to offer a glimpse of my story as an example of how nefarious tactics, often guys that's tough on crime, can cause someone to be wrongly convicted. When I was 23 years old, I was arrested and prosecuted for a murder that I did not commit as a result of a drug-related shootout that left a young person dead. I was not one of the shooters and never possessed a gun that day. When my case proceeded to trial, I watched on as the prosecutors spun a fantastical narrative, one that could only be likened to a Hollywood plot and strayed far from the facts of the case. The prosecution used emotion and storytelling tactics to confront and shock the jury. Prosecutors told the tale of a key witness as being present at the scene of the crime, but who was in fact at home studying. Moreover, they persuasively told the jury of a gun in the hands of a person who, in which there was no gun. This completely false and devoid of any facts led to a wrongful conviction, and I have no doubt that these tactics used by those prosecuting me swayed the jury in this conviction, which ultimately led to my incarceration for 29 years. For these reasons, legislative discussion and reform pertaining to prosecutorial misconduct accountability is a crucial step in ensuring the right to a fair trial and to avoid the further injustice of more wrongful convictions. I use this opportunity to urge city council to renew the call for passing the Challenging Wrongful Conviction Act, which would make it easier for those seeking to challenge a conviction, including people who pled guilty but have evidence of their, of their innocence. Although this was vetoed by Governor Kathy Hochul late last year after it passed a legislator, it is motivating to see this bill is included in the state senate's one-house budget. I urge city council to join in the call for state legislators to reprioritize the passing of this landmark bill in 2024. During my time incarcerated, I witnessed squalid pre-trial jail and post-conviction prison conditions, which were completely inadequate to meet the needs of those in custody. Resolution requiring mental health services for those incarcerated is important, especially for those grappling with the absolute trauma of being wrongly convicted. In 2022, I received clemency, and today I'm, I am working as a client advocate at Queens Defenders, leading innovative youth programming for our young court-involved clients that helps them make better life decisions and pursue meaningful and engaging educational career goals. Last week, I celebrated one year of being home and being able to contribute positively to, to my community as well as to humanity. However, there are many spaces where formerly incarcerated people continue to be excluded from. I believe that passing resolution I believe that passing resolution aimed at having at least one formerly incarcerated person as a member of the state border parole would help ensure the proximity and visibility of formerly incarcerated voices and would have helped me better navigate my own personal release. Similarly, proposed resolution which would allow convicted felons to serve on a jury is a step towards de-stigmatizing the formerly incarcerated and ensuring that our voices shaped from our lived experiences are not silenced in the criminal justice system. These legislative reforms are important steps forward to ensure the integrity of the decarceration process. Again, I just want to thank the Committee on Public Safety for considering legislative action aimed to prevent future wrongful convictions and to implement support in the decarceration space. I can only hope that collectively, we can work together to protect the next generation and to make our system one that is fair and just and transparent. Thank you.
Thank you as well. And as we say to each other when we are talking to returned citizens, welcome home.
Thank you so much.
I want to first start by asking the question, can this panel talk about how your offices collaborate with the conviction integrity units in each borough? For instance, are there significant differences in how each conviction integrity unit operates? And also, is there red tape or hurdles to getting the conviction integrity unit to review cases that you wish were remedied?
So they largely operate similarly and on broad spectrum, but some of them are much better funded than others. So there are more attorneys, and where there are more attorneys, the cases are reviewed faster. You know, not having open file discovery in at least one has been an impediment. As I don't know that Mr. De La Pava or Mr. Bryan mentioned, but currently there is no post-conviction discovery, so the way we get discovery is through FOIL, which was never really intended for that. It takes at least a year, often two, just to get discovery. But if we can get the conviction integrity unit to take our case, most of them will give us the discovery and that helps us. But it's a catch-22 because we can't bring a case until we have a compelling argument to make, so that is an issue. I believe Mr. Linahan was sincere and created an accurate description of his unit. Before he was the head of the unit, we had a case, actually the first one I mentioned in our examples, where his, that client's case was before the unit for five years. Nobody's case should have to sit for that long. That, you know, delay is a problem, and the backlog of people who have written to them, you know, waiting to have their case reviewed, you know, is a source of frustration as well. And I just applaud the suggestion that there be dedicated funding in each district attorney's office for these units to better review more cases more efficiently.
So I'll turn it over to Councilmember Holden.
Yes, thank you for that, by the way. Dedicated funding, which Charles Linahan mentioned, that they're not, and I was surprised at that, that a unit so important is not separately funded. And actually, separate and apart, what you mentioned with undue influence in the office, because an attorney who won the case, let's say, the prosecutor could say, well, you know what, that's baloney, this can't be, but they maybe have too much skin in the game at that point.
Right.
So would you, I mean, I'm trying to find solutions to this. Separately funded, yes, but undue influence, how do we, you mentioned a few things, but how do we know that's even being done? Because I don't know how you control that, really. Somebody walking into an office, they're in the same floor, same buildings. Do we need or could we imagine, or does any city or state have a separate unit that oversees the DA's office for this purpose?
I believe there is one in North Carolina, where in Durham, but I think that's an excellent idea, and that was the purpose of having a best, suggesting best practices. So I think some of you spoke to having uniformity within the offices, so each applicant, it shouldn't be luck of the draw which borough you were convicted in. You should all be, everyone should be, have the same shot. So perhaps if there were an oversight committee that, you know, ensured uniformity in the conviction integrity units, that would help as well. I do believe that investigators should not, you know, be shared with other units. I know in a few of the offices, I don't know if it still exists, but the investigators were also in cold case units or in other units, and I think that's a conflict of interest. I heard anecdotally, not in New York but in Philadelphia, of a conviction integrity unit attorney getting in the elevator just after they overturned a conviction, and, you know, you could hear a pin drop. I mean, there was a lot of hostility in the elevator. I don't know how you deal with that. A culture change, hire people with a tough skin, you know, that's going to be a continual challenge.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Chair.
Wow, I'm not necessarily sure if this is a part of the law, but I would assume that it's probably not. But it would be great if it was, that we would look throughout America to find all of the best practices and utilize that to really call, create that baseline so that we can, we can get it best, you know?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. And I would just say, the Innocence Project, you know, they have cases across the country, and they might be, I'm sure they'd be willing to help with that.
Absolutely. So seeing that there are no more questions, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
And we are actually going to be taking a five-minute recess before we continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to ask that everyone please take their seats. We shall resume momentarily. Once again, please take your seats. We will be resuming momentarily. Thank you for your cooperation.
Good afternoon. We are going to proceed. I now open the hearing for public testimony. I want to remind members of the public that this is a governmental proceeding, and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Furthermore, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit copies of their transcripts of such recording, may submit copies of transcripts of such recordings to the sergeant-at-arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak today, please fill out an appropriate card with the sergeant-at-arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have two minutes, exactly two minutes, to speak on wrongful convictions and the criminal justice issues that pertain to their resolutions being considered today. Please be advised that off-topic testimony will strictly be prohibited. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit, please, please provide a copy of that testimony to the sergeant-at-arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov or other email address within seventy-two hours of this hearing. Audio and video recordings will not be accepted. And just for clarity, testimony is T-E-S-T-I-M-O-N-Y at C-O-U-N-C-I-L dot N-Y-C dot G-O-V. Thank you. I'd like to call now Ruben Wills. Hopefully, I don't butcher this name too much. Shadaise Lucas? Got it. Rodney Charlemagne, Marcelo Paul, and Joseph Beer. So, good afternoon. You may actually begin whichever order you would like.
Okay. So, good afternoon. I'm not going to speak. I'm former councilmember Ruben Wills. I'm here today because of the work that we've been doing because of the wrongful convictions. In 2017, I was wrongly convicted, came home after two and a half years, and was exonerated. I do want to express my esteem for the chair. I know you went through the same experience, as well as Councilman Holden and the speaker for allowing this hearing or pushing these hearing to go forward. I would just like to let those who are brought with me speak because they have an array of being previously incarcerated. So, some of the bills speak to things that they really believe in. The next panel is the same. So, I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. I would say ladies first, but because it's public testimony, you can go in whichever order you see fit. Yes.
Good afternoon. My name is Shadaise Lucas. I am the executive coordinator for Policy Inc., and I will be reading the statement from Assemblyman Eddie Gibbs. "Good afternoon. I am proud to speak today in support of A 1432A and Bill S 206A sponsored by Assemblyman Jeff Aubrey and Senator Cordell Claire, which would repeal the lifetime ban on jury service for people convicted of a felony. The premise of this bill is simple. Once you have served your time and repaid your debt to society, you should be eligible to serve on a jury. This is not a new concept. We have recognized that people should be able to reestablish themselves post-incarceration and enjoy the rights that other citizens do. In recent years, we have banned the box by outlawing asking about prior conviction on employment applications. We have repealed the lifetime voting ban, restoring voting rights to millions of New Yorkers, and we passed Clean Slate to remove the restrictions and obstacles that come with a criminal conviction. But still, people convicted of a felony are barred for life from serving on a jury. So, often, we hear of folks who want to get out of jury duty, many of whom do not realize the significance of being on a jury. When you serve on a jury, you are the last check on the prosecutors to ensure they are properly applying and enforcing the law. People who have experienced the criminal justice system, many of them through plea deals that never even make it to a jury, understand the supreme role that a jury plays in determining someone's fate. When we say jury of our peers, it needs to be reflected. This bill would ensure that all lives, all lived experiences and walk-through lives are reflected in the jurors."
If, if you can wrap up, if the testimony you have also can be sent to us as a part of the testimony for record, that'd be great. We just have to make sure we adhere to the two-minute time mark.
Okay.
And so, the time is, time has expired unless you have, if you can wrap up.
Yep. I have ten more seconds. I commend public advocate Williams for putting forward this resolution today. And I want to thank the assembly sponsor, Jeff Aubrey, for his decades of work on behalf of incarcerated individuals as we near his retirement at the end of this year. I encourage you all to vote in favor of this resolution. Thank you. Sincerely, Edward Gibbs.
Thank you as well.
Chair, I would ask that the time, because it's up to your discretion as the chair, be extended to three minutes, especially since we sat for two and a half hours dealing with DAs. It is actually your discretion if someone can go to three minutes or five minutes.
No, I definitely understand. And unfortunately, because of the rules and regulations, if we extend the time and extend the time more than that and continue to extend it, we'll be going on for a long time.
I'm not saying for every specific person.
Oh, no. We have to, we have to be uniform for every single person. So, that's why we are restricted to the two-minute time mark. But if they, but the good thing about it is this, and I want to, I want to make this very, very clear. If the testimony that is being read can also be sent, it can all be a part of the record.
Right. No, I understand the written record.
You know, I understand the part about being able to say it, but just make sure that that testimony that you have, when that two-minute time mark comes, if you could wrap up as quick as possible, that'd be perfect. But also submit the rest of the testimony. We want that testimony to be a part of the record. Thank you.
Next. Whoever's going next.
Good afternoon. I want to say thank you to Chairperson Salam and the rest of the committee for hearing this important committee on public safety. I also want to thank the New York State Senators and Assembly members who have sponsored these important pieces of legislation that the council is now hearing resolutions upon. So, my name is Joseph Bear. I'm a formerly incarcerated individual. I was arrested, locked up, and I was seventeen years old. I spent nine years, three months, and fifteen days in prison. During that time, I've experienced the entire criminal justice system. I went to trial at age nineteen. I went to several parole board hearings, which I was constantly denied over and over again. I eventually filed a pro se appeal, administrative appeal, and they found that the parole commissioner did not follow the law, and I was subsequently granted release. Upon my release, I also had to deal with a lot of various mental health issues upon, you know, I went to prison at seventeen years old, so coming back after so many years of trauma, and like I was a lot to deal with. That's why a lot of these bills do speak directly to me regarding, as far as these parole hearings, these juries, like select, like I'm from Queens, born and raised. I went out in Nassau County, middle class. My jury pool did not represent me whatsoever. When I went to these parole hearings, I'm having letters from New York State representatives who write the law that's saying I'm a great candidate for parole, and these commissioners are completely disregarding the law, and they're doing their own thing. And then even me coming out, like it was such a challenge for me, and I recognize the need for just, not intense, but like, I mean, the need for mental health services upon your reentry into the community and just having to come to grasp with just how far things have changed and how much you have to change. and how much you have to change along with it so that you can once again be a productive member of society. I think these bills are very important, and they would, they would have, like, if these laws were in place, it would have had a huge impact on my own personal experiences. And like, right now, I'm in, I'm going to school, formally, I'm going to school for criminal justice. I would love to be a lawyer one day. I'm planning on signing up my LSAT, taking the bar exam, and these are all things that are like, that could have been facilitated in a greater fashion if there are any more.
No, definitely thank you for that. I mean, all of the, especially the mental health aspect, you know, folks that go to prison, this is one thing that I want to just kind of echo based on what you're saying. What's lost on the public a lot of times is that me, fifteen years old, going to prison, I came out as a grown man. You came out as a grown man. Many of us who've been rolled over by the spikels of justice, we come out looking like we're grown men, but in fact, our minds are still fifteen years old, sixteen years old. We're still back in the time that we were, and we have to play catch-up. And it's a really tremendous thing, so I definitely appreciate you bringing that to this testimony about mental health issues and the fact that we want to be able to participate at higher and higher levels. So, definitely thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Salam and esteemed members of the committee. Today, I wanted to speak on a bill mandating the governor appointing formerly incarcerated persons service a memo on the parole board. I myself recently just went to merit board and was granted my release. I think the first word that come to my mind is perspective. Because I find myself, or I found myself sitting in front of people that may not completely understand my perspective, where I may have came from and where I may be going. A lot of times, it can feel like I'm sitting in court all over again. I don't want to really talk your ears off too much, but I just think that the only word that could come to my mind again is perspective, just having somebody that has been the place that I have been, which is prison, and is obviously home, doing what they need to be doing. Having someone sitting there to give, to weigh in on the option to allow somebody to go home is pertinent. Again, I'm not a man of too many words, but I just think that this is something that we definitely need to look into and weigh on heavily because it can seem unfair at times. Thank you for your time more than anything, and I appreciate you guys for having me here.
And thank you for your testimony as well. You know, one of the worst things, because I understand, I've been there. You know, we come out of prison oftentimes, and the challenge is for us to be able to participate again. But oftentimes, we're hiding in plain sight. And, you know, for those of us who know, it's hard to hide in plain sight, you know, especially when you want to be able to have a family and be a productive member of society again. Especially, that perspective has to be understood. And who better than us to be able to participate in that? So, thank you for your testimony.
Good afternoon. My name is Rodney Charlemagne. I'm here to advocate for the Senate Bill 206A and Assembly Bill 1432A, a legislative push that seeks to reform the judiciary law in New York by removing a lifetime ban on jury duty for individuals with felony convictions who have completed any term of incarceration. Me, from my own personal experience, I sat through two jury trials in which the jury were not ones of my peers. And due to the prosecution directing the jury, them not having an understanding for the law and not being ones of my peers, the judge giving them instruction to disregard remarks made in subvention, they didn't have an understanding for the law to follow through. So, through just frustration of sitting there, going over the time limit that they expected to be there, I was convicted of a charge which I should have been acquitted for. Now, if you survey any of these marginalized areas where most convictions are taking place, and you ask how many people have family or relatives that went to college opposed to being incarcerated, it's going to be a landslide. So, most people in those situations educate themselves, ask for yourself. You went to prison, and you develop an understanding for the law, I'm sure. And just like anybody else, so why wouldn't, why shouldn't those people be a part of making those decisions? So, I'm here to advocate for that and say thank you for the time for hearing us.
Definitely, thank you for that as well. You know, the perspectives that you all bring to this testimony is really important, and it's not falling on deaf ears at all. I understand, you know, and I don't necessarily have any questions, you know, but just definitely welcome home to all of you who have done time wrongfully. I always thought that the jury of my peers as often has been made a part of a joke by the, by the most prolific comedians. You know, I was looking on the jury pool and was trying to find out, where's my man Bobo and Rahim? I don't, I don't understand, I don't know any of these folks. The peer group, I think, is really important, especially when has been said, we make up the majority of the prison industrial complex, but we don't make up the majority of the people in America. So, thank you for your testimony. I'd now like to call Bobby Garcia, Jennings, Anthony, Kevin Rennie Smith, and Al Khan. And you all may begin whichever order you want to follow, just strictly adhere to the two-minute mark. Thanks. Press the mic.
Good afternoon. My name is Al Khanou. I'm here to actually read a testimony from Senator Cordell Claire. Good afternoon, my councilmember and chair of the Committee on Public Safety, Yusuf Salam, and members of the New York City Council Committee on Public Safety. I commend you for addressing this incredibly important issue of effort to evaluate and remediate wrongful conviction claims. As someone who fought alongside the exonerated five for decades, this is truly one of the most remarkable moment of justice that I have ever been witness to. To have four of my bills appear before you, before this committee in resolution form, now under the leadership of one of the exonerated five, a singularly important moment in our history. To the matter at hand before us today, I'm deeply honored that this committee is considering lending your full support to four of my bills currently pending in the state legislature. Naturally, I support and applaud your action and wanted to take a moment to highlight why each bill is exceptionally essential. First, Senate Bill 206A, which we call jury of our peer. This legislation will restore the faith, the right of individuals who were formerly incarcerated, convicted of a felony, to serve on jury, depriving them of this right and depriving defendants of a jury pool made up of their actual peer is not only unfair and unwise, but potentially illegal and unconstitutional. Second, Senate Bill 206A, which we call jury peer, the legislation will restore the right of individuals who were formerly... I'm sorry, I think I just read the same thing. Second, Senate Bill 4795, which requires that at least one member of the state Board of Parole be a formerly incarcerated person. To me, the logic is, the logic is unassailable. Who better to know, who, who better to know if an individual has gone and rehabilitated themselves than a person who had to live under the very same life-altering and challenging condition? The third and fourth bill intertwined bills, 4855 and Senate 4812, which both pretend, which both pretend to financial compensation to those who have been unjustly convicted in terms of a just compensation for prison label and to return, and the return of any time restitution and payment. I hope this committee will pass all these resolutions swiftly in that we, we are able to pass this in the Senate next, next state meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony as well. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Bobby Garcia, Senior, from the King of Kings Foundation. I'm here today to speak about support of Bill 1738 and Assembly Bill 127, a vital piece of legislation that seeks to uphold principles of freedom of speech and artistic expression in our great state of New York. Basically, the key provisions of the immisibility of evidence, the bill introduces a new section of the criminal procedure law specifying the rules of the immisibility of evidence of defendant's creative expression in criminal cases. This provision seeks to protect individuals from having their artistic works used against them in the court without a clear and convincing proof of a factual nexus between the creative expression and the case. Basically, I'm here to just ask that you pass this bill so that we have the protection of the free speech, the free speech of the prosecutor not be held against us. The legislative response to concerns and appreciation of central music genres such as rap has been unfairly stigmatized and used against stereotype individuals, particularly those who marginalize communities. By prohibiting the use of creative expression as evidence without a clear factual connection to the case, this bill aims to prevent the misuse of art and music and criminal proceedings and to protect the individual's constitutional rights. The bill upholds New York legislature as a champion of free speech and artistic expression by preventing unwarranted use of creative works as evidence in criminal trials. The bill ensures that individuals are not unfairly targeted, stigmatized based on their artistic preferences or creative output promoting more equitable and just legal systems. So, I ask that you pass this bill, 1738, and Assembly Bill 11027. Thank you very much, and have a good day.
Thank you for your testimony as well.
Good afternoon. My name is Kevin Rennie Smith. Good afternoon. My name is Kevin Rennie Smith. I'm a victim of a wrongful conviction. I served twenty-seven years in prison for a crime I didn't commit. Today, I serve as Executive Director of Families and Friends of Wrongfully Convicted, Inc., with Derek Hamilton is the CEO of this organization. Unfortunately, he was unable to be with us today. I would like to speak on three perspectives of the bill. Specifically, one, allowing formerly incarcerated people to sit on the state Board of Parole. I believe this is a great piece of legislation because it allows people with live experience to sit and evaluate parole candidates. Formerly incarcerated people are people who will ensure that anyone that come before them will receive a full, complete, and fair parole hearing. We're talking about people who are making a huge contribution out here in society today. The next one I'd like to speak on is creative expression. Everyone who lives in the United States have a First Amendment right to free speech. When prosecutors and judges use an artist's music, his lyrics, to solely to convict him, to send him in prison, this is injustice, and it's not right. They're taking away their right to speech. They have been robbed of that. And lastly, I would like to say that the, I'm asking the council to please help pass a legislation that would, that would help people who've been wrongly convicted be compensated. Because any law that limits us from being compensated is equivalent to slavery. I'm reminded of slavery in America from sixteen nineteen, eighteen sixty-five, where my ancestor was placed on a plantation and subjected to cruel and unusual punishment. Only a hundred fifty-nine years later, their offspring have yet to receive any compensation. I'm talking about forty acres in a mule. Thank you.
Thank you as well.
Good afternoon. My name is Anthony Jennings, formerly incarcerated individual, served thirty-one years in prison. I'm here to support and urge your support on Senate Bill 4795 and Assembly Bill 5959. February, I graduated from the University of Chicago CBL Leadership Academy. It was the first class that was ever held in the White House of graduation. So, it was history. So, being a formerly incarcerated person, this is important because so many of us is doing positive things. And to sit on a parole board, knowing what the makeup of the parole board looked like is no one that served prison sentence on it, which would make it diverse. When I came in these halls, it said, "A government for the people, of the people," right? What does that go? "A government of the people, by the people, for the people." So, if we're going to live by that motto that the founding fathers did, then it should be someone formerly incarcerated sitting on the parole board, as well as on the jury. In my case, I did what I did. I served my prison sentence. I came home and redeemed myself and my community. I now work with Life Camp, Inc. as Chief for the Streets, working with outreach youth so they don't make the same poor choices. I mean, I didn't make a mistake, I made poor choices. Right, the system worked for me. So, now, if you put a formerly incarcerated on the parole board, it's more, it'd be more fairer. And now, the discussion in the room will be open, and not just from a law enforcement perspective or social service perspective, with someone that have lived experience helping make any decision to make our community safe, as well as a person that redeemed herself remorseful, responsibility, redemption. And this is all that we ask for in our community when you come back from serving your time. Thank you for your time.
Listen, thank you all for your testimony as well, and welcome home for sure. One of the things that I wanted to say was, as it relates to the perspective of the parole boards and things of that nature, this testimony is going to go a very, very long way. This is not falling on deaf ears, and I'm not just talking about myself, but I'm talking about the greater public that needs to understand as well, don't shirk your responsibility. You know, many in government have said that, and we echo that. When it comes time for you to go to a jury, go serve on that jury. And we need to make laws that shore that up as well. But in the meantime, making sure that our community knows that do not shirk your responsibility. It's important, because we're looking, we right now are receiving testimony that we're looking for our peer group, and we don't see that. So, I thank you for your testimony, and much appreciated.
Thank you.
I'd like now to call Janine Springer. Hopefully, I didn't mess that name up. Andrew Artem Gravich. Margaret I'll just spell this last name, D-A-N-I-S-H-E-F-S-K-Y. She left? Okay, well, okay. Sri U-G-A-V Gazala Halavi. And you may begin in whichever order you would like.
Thank you Chairman Salam and Council and Chairman, not Chairman, Councilman Holden. I'm here to speak a few things about wrongful conviction. First of all, that, I mean, it's a horrible thing all around, but I would just ask that more emphasis be placed on the victim. You know, if the DA's office could have more resources in that area of finding who the actual criminal is, because, I mean, obviously, we're focused on the wrongful conviction of the person who may have been incarcerated, but also, there's still a victim out there who is not justified, you know, who has not been taken care of. And so, I would just ask that more discussion and resources be placed on, on finding the actual justice for the actual criminal. And then, also regarding wrongful conviction of victims, I am concerned, as I mentioned last time, that there is, what's wrong with the wrongful conviction that I see is that there is just no conviction of crime for the insanity that's happening in our city. I feel like our city is collapsing under crime and antisemitism and hate crimes and these protests. And I just believe that, you know, if your committee, the Public Safety Committee, it's your responsibility to keep New York safe, the public safety, but yet, I don't hear anything coming out of this committee. There's no statements been made on what's happening, especially in our universities. We are not safe. I mean, the Jewish community is not safe. All New Yorkers are not safe. And I heard your agreement the last time we were here to have a hearing specifically on the anti-Israel protests, and there has been no hearing. And in the past, that was February twenty-sixth, and in the past two months, the crime has just escalated, the lawlessness, the destruction, the violence, the antisemitism. has just escalated, the lawlessness, the destruction, the violence, the antisemitism, the harassment, the threats, the, it's absolutely unsafe environment that's just escalating. And we need to have a hearing on, on this now, on these protests that are taking over our universities. And I'd really like to hear some statement from City Council and from the Public Safety Committee, standing against this anarchy, standing against this lawlessness and these hate crimes. I mean, we've got victims of hate crime-
Thank you for your testimony. I appreciate your concerns-
You're welcome. We have victims of hate crime who are not being protected.
If you, if you-
And so I, I just really ask again-
If you can reach out to our office-
And I have-
In order to discuss that, that'll be a great-
There's just not been any progress in that. And so I really, and as you see, it's just escalating and the city is not safe-
Well, I appreciate that, but we are, we're at the two-minute mark. The reason why I'm asking for you to reach out to our office is because this particular time is for wrongful convictions-
And it is wrongful that there's no convictions, there's no consequences for lawlessness.
Right.
And that's the problem.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening. Thank you.
I am to elaborate more on what was being said here. These protests are not just like words count.
I'm sorry, we are, you said protest, but we're talking about wrongful convictions?
Yeah. I have a personal issue with, with the DA. I'm trying to get to someone to actually help me, but I would like to reach out personally about that. We are talking about this protest-
No, we're talking about wrongful conviction. This testimony that we're talking and receiving today is about wrongful convictions.
So I, I have a case in civil, civil court, which is totally wrong. We are senior citizens. We are being a victim of financial scam. And the way we were treated, it was horrible. We, we did not have a hearing. We did not have a document to exchange discovery or to see this is wrong because everything that was presented was totally wrong. And of course, the, the-
So I'm sorry, we, I, I appreciate what you're bringing up, but we're, we're talking about wrongful convictions and this is not really the place for that. It's off topic and if you can, if you can get on topic in terms of wrongful convictions-
Yeah. So I was, I did not have a hearing, did not have a discovery, and did not have a due process. And my husband and I, he's seventy-five, almost seventy years old, we are not finding someone to help us to actually show evidence.
Can I ask you, where, where was this-
In the civil court.
No, I mean, where in terms of the boroughs? That, where, where did this happen?
Here in Manhattan.
Which district?
In Manhattan.
Right, but Manhattan has many districts. I'm in Harlem, I'm, I'm the Councilman for Harlem.
No, 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 here in Manhattan, small claim courts.
I'm asking you specifically, what district did this happen in? Because the recourse that you need is to reach out to your council member and also to the legal remedies that you can get in order for that particular thing.
We tried everything, we don't know. I wish I can contact you personally and you can help me with that and my husband. This, if this is about conviction and this is totally wrong, and just because we are senior citizens and we said we are protected by the law, but we are not being heard.
Understood. If you, if you can reach out then to our, to our office- And we have members of our staff here-
How can I call, how can I contact you?
District nine.
District nine.
And then the num- the nine is, the number nine, at council.nyc.gov.
Is there a phone number?
The phone number... They'll, they'll, they'll connect. My, my staff is here, so-
Okay.
But thank you, thank you for your testimony.
But to elaborate on this, how can we see-
I'm sorry, we, we, we're at time.
This protest are harming-
We're at time, we're not gonna be able to continue with your testimony regarding that.
And nothing have been done. This is wrong, it's very wrong.
I acknowledge what you're-
This happened to Israel-
I acknowledge your grievances, but this testimony today is about wrongful convictions. And so we're gonna have to keep on topic.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Andrew and I'd like to say that, that I'm sorry that you were only convicted of a crime that you did not commit. So I have a suggestion that might help out the people who's going to court. It seem like that the defense don't have like enough funds, so it might be better if, if the friends were like in a group for the defense and for the prosecutors. So in that way, they could pull for the same budget and everybody had the same equal amount of funds that they could defend a prosecutor. That might help out, since the defense keep saying that they don't have like enough funds. But I also like to talk about how I'm being followed around by cover people in law enforcement that might lead to a wrongful conviction, because according to the news and court cases, what they do is they plant drugs on people and they plant guns on people. I picked a picture up in two thousand thirteen that they've been following me around and they had assaulted me in New York and Chicago, they picked me in a hospital with bodily injuries. So that's why I'm asking for an investigation of law enforcement, because they constantly attacking me illegally. They did that to a person named Philando Castle, they followed him, according to the New York Times, they, law enforcement followed him around for thirteen years and then they executed him. There's another lady that filed a complaint against law enforcement, her name is Kim Groves, and police had her executed. So I had filed complaints against police in Chicago and New York for, for attacking me and putting me in a hospital against my real bodily injuries. So I'm asking for like an investigation to go on, because these people, they're terrorizing the American public. They not only do it to me, but they do it to people throughout America. Colin Kaepernick is one example, Steve Tally. So law enforcement is terrorizing the American public and they doing it to me. So I'm asking for an investigation to go on to find out what's going on with them, why they're terrorizing people.
Thank you. If you can reach out to our office as well, I'm not necessarily sure if we might be able to help your particular cause in terms of trying to get an investigation going, or we might be able to get you to the right people that can help you with the grievance that you have. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, thank you. Body cam and police reports, that's all I'm asking for.
I'd like now to call Chin Levy, Sophie Sason, Richard W. Flores, Nicoleen G U T O R E O I, Christopher Leon Johnson, and Raul Rivera.
Is it, all right, perfect.
Yes, you got two minutes to-
Yeah.
Talk about wrongful convictions.
All right, cool. So hello, my name is Christopher Leon Johnson, and you know, the truth is about wrongful convictions is, hey, you know, some of them are really wrongly convicted, but none of them, they're lying about why they got convicted. Now, the issue is of chair like you, Yusuf Salam, is that you are captive to Vocal New York, and you won't say anything about the so-called wrongly convicted guy named Douglas Powell, who's a level-two sex offender, standing around the city council and standing at press conferences like it's all good. You know who he is. You, Douglas Powell, Douglas Powell, you know who he is, man, this-
What you're talking about? But if you can keep it to, if you can keep your testimony to wrongful convictions-
Yeah, I'm keeping it to the topic, I'm keeping it to the topic, because he's always saying he's wrongly convicted, but he's-
You can, you, you don't have to raise your voice.
I know, I'm not saying, I'm not raising my voice.
I'm just saying that you can keep your testimony to wrongful convictions.
Yeah, it's about wrongful convictions, bro.
I don't know the name member that you're talking about, however, if you can keep it to wrongful convictions, that'd be perfect.
Yeah, it's about wrongful, wrongful convictions. So he say he's wrongly convicted, but he's not wrongly convicted. But the problem is, you guys are standing next to this guy and he's a racist, anti-Asian activist that the city council is really silent about. So you need, as a chair, to stand, need to condemn this guy and, and the other guy who's so-called fighting for his so-called brother, was another sex offender named Akeem Browder, you needed, you needed, you need, as a chair of the Public Safety Committee, to condemn those two men for one, both these sex offenders, at the same time waving the banner, and you are listening to these two guys for waving the banner for sex offenses, for, for, for so-called wrongful convictions and closing Rikers and all this woke crap.
I'm sorry, are you, are you the same guy that told the public about my license plate?
No, I did, yeah, yeah, it's true, but-
That got my wife's car to be broken into the other day?
No, I didn't break your car, what are you talking about?
I didn't say you did, I mean, you were the one that photographed my license plate-
Yeah.
And asked the public to find out most, any information they could-
Yeah.
About me.
Yeah.
And they broke into my wife's car.
I didn't break into your car, you think I, you think I was, no, you're trying to say that, you're trying, and say wait, that I sent that off. No, you're trying to say wait, that I sent that off.
Your testimony, your time is up.
No, no, but let me tell you right, one more thing is, you need to, you need to stand for the Jewish community-
Thank you, sir, your time is up.
You need to stand for the Jewish community-
Sir?
And we're gonna vote you out. Your time, your days are numbered in the city council, and we're gonna vote you out next term.
You can be, somebody please remove this young man. I will not be intimidated by anyone, and I want to say that for the record. When people go after members of the council to try to intimidate them, that will not be tolerated, and especially in this government proceeding. So I apologize for the public in that regard. You can go ahead, sir.
What's not being discussed and what are the actual factors that are resulting in wrongful convictions? I've heard every panel speak about crime and convictions and what could be construed as bureaucratic hypocrisy, but at no time did I hear any panel discuss the use of, for example, AI technology to perpetrate what is then construed as crime for either economic or social factors. You yourself were in prison for seven years for a crime that you say you did not commit and you were exonerated. Since two thousand fifteen, I've been a street homeless person for over two years, living at a facility called the B R C, who are committing heinous acts of crime such as rape, theft, coercion, fraud, et cetera, which I've reported to the governor and the mayor and had detectives come to investigate, as a result of a family court trial which ended in a verdict of guilty, as a result of a perjurious judge. I, I know I only have two minutes. I was incarcerated in two thousand seventeen by the NYPD because they said I stole beer, when in fact, they were using AI technology, I believe, as a tactic to make people engage in crime, which I tried to prove to no avail. No police would listen to me, no lawyer would listen to me, no one to this very day has allowed me to talk about what actually happened. I, I went to court, I had a lawyer, and the lawyer spoke to the judge briefly, they spoke to the lawyer briefly, and I was set free. But after that, the same cycle of behavior continued by other people, by law enforcement, et cetera. I've tried to reach out to different agencies, I've been here since two thousand sixteen, I've been to the ACLU, et cetera, and no one's been able to help me. And when I mean no one, I mean no one. I've been to family court, I've been to the Senate, I went to Washington D C in two thousand sixteen, thinking I would get some help, and so far, nothing has happened. So I know this is about wrongful convictions, I think people are trying to elaborate maybe on, on other factors that are not being, or cannot be focused on here. So I, I, I don't want to exasperate that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you as well for your testimony.
Thank you, sir.
If anyone here wishes to testify and has not heard their name being called, please see the Sergeant-at-Arms in the back of the room to fill out a witness slip. We will now move to Zoom testimony. Please wait for the Sergeant-at-Arms to announce you before, before beginning to deliver your testimony. Thank you. On Zoom, we have Alexandria Lafata, Eileen M. Mahir, Camia L. M. Jones. And we'll start with Eileen M. Maher. You may begin.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Eileen Maher. I'm a Civil Rights Union leader from Vocal New York and a social worker. I am also a survivor of the New York City and New York State Correctional Systems, I apologize. I pled guilty to a crime I did not commit just to get off of Rikers and return home in somewhat of a timely fashion, even if that entailed a state prison bid. It also made me a sur-, it made me, a survivor of domestic violence, criminalized for said violence. The officers that arrested me did not have a legal arrest warrant, something I didn't find out until after I returned home. While fighting my case during the four hundred and twenty-seven days I spent on the island, it was made, cleared me that if I divulged who had truly committed the alleged crime, rather than exonerate me, I would be additionally charged with conspiracy, which carries a mandatory minimum of fifteen years in state prison, even though I had no part or knowledge of said crime. So I was stuck between a rock and a hard place. Have I mentioned the prosecutor had a familiar relationship with the plaintiff in my case prior to my arrest? I'm one of the thousands, if not millions, who have been placed in this situation. In fact, of ninety-five percent and more of those detained on alleged crimes plead guilty just to go home. A myriad of lazy and corrupt police work, classism, racism, and subpar, if not corrupt prosecutors. This is not justice, this is corruption. And this has been the norm with the NYPD in our so-called justice system for decades. This is why I urged the passage of the New York City Bill on wrongful convictions that supports the passage of the state bill of the same name. Passage of those will allow many like myself, legal resource to clear our names and many to be released from prison. No one should be detained, incarcerated, or any of the above for any crime he or she did not commit. And those who participate in one's wrongful incarceration knowingly must be held accountable. Thank you, and I apologize for the picture in my profile, I didn't get a chance to change it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony as well. Seeing no members, no other members of the Zoom, we do have one person who signed up. We will now call Monique Silverman to the, to the testimony table.
Hi, how are you? My name is Monique Silverman, thank you so much for having me. I still am just so horrified about what's going on with the wrongful convictions, and I'd really like to be a part of the DNA testing and all that. I had called your organization, but I haven't heard back from them, and I'll keep on trying to call them, and I'd love to be a part of that. So many people are innocent in jail, it's horrifying, all of it. So that's number one. Number two is, we really need a hearing for our, for the antisemitism that's going on in the city. And this is the only venue we can really voice our opinions and voice our-
Or actually, you can reach out to our office to discuss that. Right now, we're definitely talking about wrongful convictions only-
I believe we have.
And not about what's going on in the city at this particular point in time.
I believe we have.
With the exception of wrongful convictions.
I, I understand. And with wrongful convictions, I mean, these poor people, they come out of the prisons, they are just, they don't, there are no jobs for them, they're constantly, you know, there's this constant, you know, thing on their records. I don't know how they do it, frankly. I think it's horrifying, all of it, and I think all of it has to be changed. These poor people, they've done their time, they got, come out of prison and still, they're doing their time. They can't get jobs. I mean, it's horrifying, and I hope something, you know, really radical happens, because that's the only way it can, it can, you know, work out. But I do really, I, is there a number to call for, to have a hearing?
Actually, members of my staff are here and can, can share that information with you.
Because we have called several times and, and we'll talk to them again today, but, you know, we really need a hearing, hundred percent. Okay?
Well, thank you. You definitely bring up a very important part that people who have been wrongly convicted deal with all the time, and that is no real remedies for them to re-acclimate back to society.
Exactly.
So definitely thank you for that. A member of my staff will be in touch with you so that you can be in contact with, with that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody. Seeing that there are no other people who signed up for testimony, this hearing is now adjourned.